We can go. All right, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order Monday, September 22nd, 2025 at 5:30 PM for closed session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Santinez.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez. Mayor Dutton.
Here.
Mayor would like to make a motion to excuse the absence of Councilmember Sanchez.
I'll second.
Okay, that sounds like the right thing to do, so without objection, that'll be the order. So Ryan, close.
You want to take a vote?
No.
Well, we're gonna have anybody with objection.
You got it, yeah. Mr. Smoot, would you like to lead a closed session?
If you dare.
Happily. The council recessed the closed session for three items, Items 3A, B, and C listed on the agenda, the first one being real property negotiations for 9855 Flower Street, second one being conference with legal counsel, one item anticipated litigation, and the third one being conference with labor negotiator between myself and our deputy city attorney.
I have a conflict on 3A, a property conflict.
Okay, anybody else with any recusals? Let the record show that Councilmember Morse has recused herself from 3A.
Yes, 3A, and I'm sorry, it's a business, my business, not a property.
All right, we're going to recess to closed session then. Oh, and there's no public comments because there's nobody in the audience.
Fred's not here.
Recession to closed session. Okay, let the record reflect that we're reconvening to open session on Monday, September 22nd, 2025 at 7:00 PM for the city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Santinez.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Dutton.
Here. Let me back up, there was no reportable action in closed session prior to open session. All right, can I have everybody rise for invocation led by our greatest Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez and the Pledge of Allegiance best recited by Jim Delonga, our Director of Economic Development.
Well, thank you, Mayor, with that, I will do my best to do a good prayer. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the give of life, we thank you for this wonderful city of Bellflower, we thank you for giving us wonderful residents, we thank you for giving us our dedicated staff, we thank you for our members of the military, our first responders, please watch over them and have them return safely if they're signed abroad. We thank you for allowing us to meet tonight to discuss the various items before us, please watch over those who are homeless or hungry and those who are unemployed. As we gather tonight to discuss the matters before the city council, please watch over us, please guide us, please give us the wisdom to decide what's best for our community. We ask all this in your mighty name, amen.
Please face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, and join with me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna do city council announcements, and I'll start. Race down to downtown Bellflower to join the Bellflower Noon's Lion and the city of Bellflower for the annual Bellflower Car Show on Saturday, October 4th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. Bellflower Boulevard will be lined up with classic cars, custom rides, community booths, live music, local businesses, and plenty of great food. While you're there, don't miss out on a special giveaway from the Bellflower environmental team, would be free oil change kits while supplies last. Each kit includes an 11-quart oil container, funnel, gripper, double filter container, and a shop rag. The program encourages proper recycling of used motor oil and helps residents keep their vehicles running smoothly. It's shaping up to be an afternoon of free family-friendly fun in the heart of Bellflower Downtown. For more information, contact Bellflower at (562) 574-2283, or visit the Bellflower Car Show on the Internet at bellflowercarshow.com. Thank you. Okay, Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez, what you got?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone. The Metropolitan Water District is doubling its turf replacement rebate for non-residential properties, offering $7 per square foot of grass removed, the highest amount ever offered region-wide. The incentive helps Southern California businesses, schools, HOAs, and other institutions replace non-functional water-intensive grass with sustainable landscaping ahead of the 2027 state law banning the use of potable water in non-functional turf. The rebate increase is supported by state and federal funding and advances the Metropolitan's efforts to boost water efficiency across the region. Sustainable landscaping can reduce outdoor water use by up to 80%, and the program has already removed more than 230 million square feet of grass, saving enough water annually for over 83,000 homes. Applications must be submitted before starting any project, and all work must be completed within 180 days. Businesses are encouraged to apply by March 1st, 2026, before funding runs out or the rebate expires at the end of 2026. To learn more, please visit socalwatersmart.com. Again, socalwatersmart.com. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santa Inez. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, Bellflower. Bellflower residents are invited to take part in a used oil and filter recycling event on Saturday, October 18th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at O'Reilly's Auto Park, located at 15766 Bellflower Boulevard. Bring in a used oil filter and receive a free replacement filter during the event. Limit is two per household. Up to five gallons of used motor oil will also be accepted for recycling, and motor oil must be in a clear container. Participants will also receive a free oil recycling kit for participating. This event is open to Bellflower residents only, please bring proof of residency and used oil filter for exchange. This program offers a simple way to recycle responsibly while keeping your vehicle in top condition. For more information, please contact (562) 804-1424, extension 2283. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Councilmember Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. LA County is offering free lead-based paint hazard remediation services for eligible residents in the city of Bellflower. This initiative is designed to create safer and healthier home environments by addressing lead paint hazards, which are especially dangerous for young children and pregnant individuals. The individual, the enrollment period is through October 31st, so make sure to apply. To see if you're eligible for this free program, please visit leadfreehomesla.com or contact leadfreehomeLA@lacda.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Wendy Morris.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Bellflower. The CalRecycle Community Compost Pickup is back, offering residents a great opportunity to enrich their gardens while reducing waste. Stop by Riverview Park, located at 10500 Somerset Boulevard, from October 17th to the 27th to collect free compost. Residents are encouraged to bring their own buckets and shovels, supplies are limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis, so don't miss out on this eco-friendly giveaway. For more information, please contact (562) 804-1424, extension 2283. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Morse. All right, next on the agenda is public comments. Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
Okay, this is time that anybody in the audience can come up at will to the podium, sign in, and tell us something. Yeah, right. No, the tall one.
I need to turn it on, okay.
And when you're ready, just state your name, and so they'll get you on the mic.
Yes, sir. Hello, Mayor, members of council, my name is Dexter O'Connell, I'm with Safe Place for Youth, which is an organization that serves vulnerable, housing insecure, and homeless young people across Los Angeles County. It's a genuine pleasure to be with you all today. Because your city council has a La Casa board member, you have a unique opportunity to influence policy countywide, to make sure that vulnerable young people are not forgotten. Intentional support for differentiated funding streams, like in the state HAP program, has been proven to help house vulnerable young people and prevent homelessness. Policies like La Casa partnering intentionally with colleges and universities to expedite building for low-income students, and funding programming for foster youth to connect directly with adult housing are two things that La Casa could do using its funding power to really effectively serve the transition-age youth population countywide. Would love to meet with you directly to discuss this in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Dexter. Anybody else wishing to come forward? All right, not seeing any, we'll move on then. Item 11A, Mr. Smoot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna invite up Jim and Carla to take this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This is a report that you've seen many times in the past, it's an annual report that we have to do for the HUD funding, and we're putting a little bit of a twist on it, we're switching gears a little bit on this, and Carla's gonna do the presentation, and we'd like to, you know, get your feedback on how you like this one, we're changing it up a little bit.
Okay, that's always good.
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight's public hearing to review, is to review and receive public comments on the 2425 CAPR, which details the city's progress in meeting the goals set in the 2425 Annual Action Plan and the Five-Year Consolidated Plan. It is important to note that this CAPR marks the last year of the 2020-2024 Consolidated HUD requires jurisdictions that receive CDBG funds and home funds to submit the CAPR annually after a public hearing. CDBG funds are intended to improve living environment, environments, and promote economic development through job creation and services. The funds must assist low-income persons specifically in designated CDBG areas. Last year, the city received just over 897,000 in CDBG funds, plus program income and carryovers that totaled approximately $1 million to fund CDBG programs. The city also receives home funds. Home funds are used to retain and increase the affordable housing stock for renters and owners. In fiscal year 2425, the city received just over 357,000 in home funds, plus carryover funds totaling approximately $2.4 million. This table lists the 2425 CDBG-funded programs. The city made significant progress meeting housing and community development goals through CDBG-funded programs. The Fair Housing Foundation promotes equal housing opportunities for Bellflower residents by providing education, counseling, and enforcement services to prevent housing discrimination. Kingdom Causes Bellflower Good Soils Program provides transitional job opportunities, training, and case management to help individuals with the employment barriers to gain skills and build a stable life. The Bellflower Volunteer Center provides volunteer training and coordination, supports community programs, and improves quality of life for Bellflower residents. Code Enforcement addresses property and safety violations, improves neighborhood conditions, and ensures a healthy, safe environment for our residents. The Section 108 loan was a 20-year loan used to revitalize the downtown area and was paid off during this program year. Administration costs ensure HUD regulations are met. As discussed earlier this year, the Business Assistance Program had some challenges, so we are looking at updating the guidelines to make small business assistance more accessible This table lists the 2425 home-funded programs. The Housing Rehabilitation Program assists low-income homeowners within the city with much-needed home repairs and improvements. The administration costs ensure HUD compliance. And the city continues to work with Wakeland, our approved CHODO, and has committed approximately $2 million toward a CHODO project to build a permanent, to build permanent supportive housing within the city. In total, more than 1,300 Bellflower residents benefited from CDBG and home funding. These programs improved neighborhood livability, preserved affordable housing, and supported vulnerable households. The CAPR has been available on the city's website from September 12th through today, and the public notice was duly published in the Los Ritos newspaper. Our recommendation tonight is to open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution 2533, or alternatively discuss and take other reaction related to this item. That concludes my presentation, staff is available for any questions.
Before we get to the public hearing, is there any comments to staff from my colleagues? Okay.
Carla, can, thank you so much for the presentation, this is very succinct, and can you show the previous slide on home, home funds? Okay. So the goal for the rehabilitation is five, and we achieved 12, that's quite impressive, thank you so much. So can you, can you tell us what kind, what the nature of those rehab, are these mobile homes, are they single-family residential, townhomes, what, do you have that kind of information?
Uh, yes, this last year, I believe we helped one single-family residence, which was a, a home loan of $50,000 to assist with their home improvement, and the other 11 were mobile park homes.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so that's good, so we're able to help more people.
Yes.
In our city, oh, that's quite impressive. And then, in terms of the carryover funds, so you mentioned that Wakeland is still on track, there's no, there's no risk of losing the funding, because if they don't deliver, we don't have any other alternative at this point, correct?
Um, I'll let Jim answer that.
Yeah, as of right now, they are being recommended for funding for the Los Angeles County at approximately $6.5 million for their major improvements and their tax credits, and they also have, that's not a part of this presentation, but our home ARP funds, which adds another $1 million to our $2 million in CHODO funds, so they have that too. So we've also just completed paying off what was due to be paid by September of this year, so that we stay in compliance with our HUD spending limits, and we're already inching our way towards next year's home fund spending requirement, which is due in September. So they'll have, we'll have about $200,000 that we'll need to spend next, by next September, and so we should be able to do some pre-development costs, or funding with them in order to meet that goal.
So we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah, everything's looking pretty positive as of this point.
That's good, okay, again, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Coops.
All right, if we can go back to the prior slide. So item number six, or Section 108 loan payment, you mentioned that that had to do with improvements on Bellflower Boulevard 20 years ago, and we, this was the final payment on that commitment, is that right?
Yes.
So presumably, we're gonna have $538,000 more this year than we had, that we've always been paying out the last 20 years, which is like $10 million. Am I thinking right here?
Yes, but it's, it's been committed between Code Enforcement and the Business Assistance Program moving forward.
All right, so where do I see that up there?
So what we're looking at is last year, the fiscal year 2425.
Correct.
Table, so moving forward for 2526, that's where, that 538,000 will be distributed between Code Enforcement and the Business Assistance Program.
So instead of the 212, they're gonna get more than that?
Yes.
Can you tell me how much more? What percentage of the 538 is allocated for Code Enforcement, and what was the second one?
We might have to come back to you to get that one, that was in the action plan, Councilmember Coops, when we did that pack in May and June, when we did the annual action plan.
I don't remember that.
Yeah.
But I thought, you know, that's a significant amount of money to be able to reallocate.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna have to come back to you on that, because it was a significant amount.
It's bigger than anything else up there, that's for sure. You know, it's a big deal to be able to pay off a loan we've had on the books for 20 years. So I was just trying to make sure that, or find out, if you could help me remember where we reallocated it, that's all. But if you can find that, I appreciate it.
We can put that in the weekly for you, Councilmember Coops.
Good. All right, that's all I have.
The Fair Housing Foundation, the 18,000 goes to Fair Housing. Yes.
A lot for your money, huh?
That's it, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to check in on that.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. A motion by myself and a second by Mayor Protem. Without objection, that'll be the order. Anybody in the audience want to come up and voice an opinion for or against, or any questions with what we're talking about tonight?
It's very exciting.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. What's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the city council of Bellflower to adopt Resolution 25-33, a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit the 2024-25 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, known as CAPR, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD.
Second the motion.
Motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Sunny Santa Inez, and a second by Councilmember Coops. Call roll, please.
Mayor Protem Santinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Morse.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Dutton.
Aye. All right. Mr. Smoot, you want to try to introduce 11B?
Sure, give me that.
On a skimmed-over version? That the attorney will like.
Item 11B is consideration of possible action to conduct a public hearing and adopt Urgency Ordinance Number 1450, an urgency ordinance adopting the 2025 additions of the California Building Code, the California Residential Code, the California Electrical Code, the California Mechanical Code, the California Plumbing Code, the California Energy Code, the California Fire Code, the California Existing Building Code, the California Wildland Urban Interface Code, the California Green Building Standards Code, the California Reference Standards Code, and the California Building Standards Administrative Code, making certain amendments based upon local conditions and amending the Bellflower Municipal Code to reflect such changes, and waiving further reading and adopt Ordinance Number 1449, with the virtually the same title.
Good job. You can have a drink of water now. Yeah, ready to go, thank you.
You bet. Good evening, Mayor Dutton and Councilmember of the city of Bellflower, my name is Alan Cook, I'm your building official. We're gonna, this is a second reading for the 2025 Building Code Updates and Urgency Ordinance 1449, and Urgency Ordinance 1450. The 2025 Building Codes are updated every three years, that the CBSC is updated, this ordinance amends portions of the 2025 CBSC and adopts the 2025 addition of the CBSC. If adopted, the provisions of this ordinance will take effect on January 1st, 2026. Next slide. The 2025 Building Code Update, projects for which a building permit and application and the building plans were submitted before the ordinance's effective date, and for the building permits are obtained within 90 days of the effective date would be exempt from the updated regulations. Next slide, changes to the 2025 Building Code Seismic Hazard Mitigation, the requirements to address soil liquefaction that has been previously enforced by policy is now permanent language in this ordinance. Changes to the 2025 Codes CRC Section R401.4, .1, .1, .5, .1. Soil's Investigation Report for all residential projects exceeding 750 square feet or more, more than one story in height. Projects under 750 square feet may meet the necessary seismic hazard mitigation by following the city's prescriptive design methods. Next. Changes to the 2025 Codes CRC Section 904 and, I mean, R904 and R905. Modification to the CRC Roof Covering Provisions to require a minimum classification of Type B roof covering. Also, sections of the CBC, Table 1505.1, CBC Section 1505.1.2, the same modification of the Building Code, roof covering provisions to require a minimum classification of Type B roof covering materials. Changes to the 2025 Fire Code Section 503. This specific section that we are adopting of the Fire Code, Section 503, is to give the fire chief the authority to establish a minimum width for fire access roads. Next. Changes to the 2025 Fire Code BMC Chapter 15.84, this is adoption of a new Wildland Urban Interface Code, this requires a new BMC Chapter 15.84. To be added, the requirements of the Wildland Urban Interface were previously in Chapter 7 of the Building Code, now they are their own, own standard. The Energy Code, the Energy Code and those, these updates are very important to you, this is where you might get comments or concerns from constituents or phone calls, and I want to make sure these changes that you're well aware of, that do affect the city of Bellflower. Next slide, please. Energy Code Updates, Swimming Pool Requirements. Outdoor heater pools and spas must have covers. Pool heaters must be either solar and/or heat pumped, no more gas is allowed. Energy Code Updates for Commercial Kitchens, adds a mandatory electric ready for new commercial kitchens, including restaurants. So you may get phone calls there or, or conversations with regard to that. Energy Code Updates, CBC Section 903 Automatic Sprinklers and Systems are required to be installed in Group B, Group F-1, Group M, and Group S1 occupancies that have lithium iron ion, or lithium metal. F-1, Group M, and Group S1 occupancies that have lithium ion or lithium metal battery systems. Occupancy, next slide, please, for the occupancy criteria. CB Section 903.2 Continued. Group B Testing and R&amp;D Labs for such batteries. Group F1 is lithium battery or EV manufactured, ESS or equipment that uses such batteries. Group M, storage of such batteries. Group S1, storage or repair of EVs with a fire area greater than 500 square feet. Next. So, this is an urgency ordinance, and the purpose of this ordinance is due to that state law has been passed that therefore we must make adoption of anything to the CRC Code before September 30th, and that then it needs to be submitted to the state because for the next six years, there will be no changes in the CRC Building Code. The staff recommendation is that we, recommendation is to adopt the Urgency Ordinance Number 1450 by at least four-fifths vote and waive further reading of the Adopt Ordinance Number 1449, or alternative to discuss and take action related to this item. And that should be it. Next slide. Last thing before I want to mention, we do have a copy of the new code up here that can be looked at during the meeting or after the meeting for anybody. It's right here.
All right. All right, who wants to go first with questions?
The builder. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First question, I think I want to direct it towards Mr. Berger and towards Alan. How much of this do we actually truly have any ability to influence or make any recommendations or any changes before I make my next questions or comments, I guess is my first question?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Cook is the expert with regard to the actual nitty-gritty regulations. I can give you the larger overview. The larger overview is we've made changes to the codes with regard to administrative provisions, which have to do, for example, changes to the Building Code with regard to defining red tagging, yellow tagging, and what have you, which is not actually in the state regulations. That's a local amendment that we make simply to clarify exactly what the code is and to empower the building official to make those changes. Those are basically unrestricted from the standpoint of we can make administrative changes not based upon any of the specialized categories that Mr. Cook identified, which are topographical, geologic, or climatic. And a missing one. But in any event, the real question has to do with the substantive changes to the code that Mr. Cook identified. We can make local amendments to them, but we do have to make findings that because of the unique circumstances of the City of Bellflower, that those amendments are necessary to further enhance public health and safety. So, I think Mr. Cook went through most of those. The real question, or the real issue in the jurisdiction of the City of Bellflower, for example, is seismic and liquefaction problems that we have with our soils. And that's an issue for all building within the City of Bellflower. And one of the reasons that our soils reports, for example, have an extra oomph, if you will, from the standpoint of regulations. That is a legal term, oomph. But Mr. Cook can certainly elaborate upon my overall observations.
Okay, then that'll lead me to my next question. There seems to be some flexibility. With regards to, if you could bring the PowerPoint to the pools and the spas and things of that nature, there's a limitation for gas. Is that a determination that we are doing? Or is that something that we can amend to be flexible? Just curious and really want to have a conversation on that. I am of the mindset, and I have relationship with both, you know, SoCal Gas and SoCal Edison, I'm of the mindset that there are still infrastructure deficits on the electrification side of things, and I just want to make sure that our residents have flexibility. And so, I just want to know if this is something that we can allow flexibility on within our own code or to continue to allow for gas as an option, or is this, has the state taking it away, or whoever?
Councilman Sanchez, answer your question. That is a state building code that we, as the City of Bellflower, cannot modify.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Okay, that was the first one. I kind of figured. Oh, go ahead.
Not even if there's an existing house on a lot that already has gas plumbed in the structures, and they can't plum gas to a pool heater?
So, let me give you a real example. Let's say you have an apartment complex, or let's say you have a home, and now you want to build a spa. You don't have a heater for your pool, and now you want to add a spa and put a heater in. The current writing of the current code is you could not use a gas heater for your spa. You would have to do an electric heater. And then because you chose a heater, you would have to have a mandatory pool cover.
I was just kind of going off of the, lack of better terms, wiggle room from what the attorney said.
Yeah.
Different extenuating circumstances, like it's already there. There's a meter on the property. I'm just saying. Are our hands that tied?
Our hands are that tied on that when we're coming into energy with the State of California, to be corrected by, the word shall aren't there, the word must is there quite a bit. So, we're kind of stuck in that realm of not being able to move certain things with regard to energy and greed code and this new wildland code because of the fires and such. California is moving in that direction where you can see it with the kitchens. All commercial kitchens now have to be, have to be electrical ready. The cost for that for a restaurant is going to be quite a surprise, and I think there's going to be a lot of complaints, and there's no way to bend that. I'm here to tell you, if I could bend these things, you know I would, gentlemen. And ma'am, you know I would bend these.
And to what Mr. Sanchez has said, and he alluded to a little bit, the infrastructure is not, in Southern California, isn't even there. If everybody got an electric car on the block, say you got 25 houses on the block, and they all wanted to put a charging station in their driveway, there's not enough electricity on the street. And I guess, I know you know that, and I don't think the audience knows that, but there's not. And yet, we don't want to, you know, our state won't build power plants. Again, California doesn't make sense, you know. I know it's, and we got these laws are getting shoved down our, you know what.
I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, I can say that Edison is trying to their best to increase their infrastructure.
Oh, yeah.
But it's just, it's many, many moons behind.
So, we buy kilowatts from other state to try to keep this place going.
No, I, yeah. The next, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if we, it sounds like we can't change here or anything on this one. The next one, I'd like to kind of poke around and see. I might get a no anyways, either way, but we're going to try. Let's see. This one, the clarification standpoint, this one is just, we have, the commercial kitchens have to just be left ready for electrification, or they have to be electrified?
They have to be wired and everything, as if you could plug right in and go.
So, you can swap out an appliance.
You can drop the appliance right in and go. So, that means your panel's going to have to be upgraded. You're going to have to have the breakers. You're going to have all the GFIs. You're going to have the 240 volts, 220 volts for stoves and everything. It's going to have to be there.
For this one, is it, obviously, we have a lot of buildings in the downtown or in the commercial sides that, you know, could use, is it for a full-on remodel? Is it a small remodel? Does any remodel trigger this?
Okay, so I'm going to tell you how I'm going to rule on this, okay? This is going to give some wiggle room where we can. If somebody's coming in and they're not doing anything to the kitchen, and health is not going to require them to make any major changes, okay, let's keep the word major changes. Health is not going to require that, okay? The TI itself, okay, somebody does $100,000 TI or whatever, tenant improvement in that restaurant or in that space that has a commercial kitchen, not going to require the upgrade, okay? But if you're going to come in and you're going to take over a whole new corner of the block, and you're going to build a new restaurant in, within a space, and you're going to create a new kitchen, I don't have the wiggle room in the code to change that. But I think we're going to have some opportunities to look at how much modification are you really doing to whether or not, where we have to go there. But I think the demarcation line from my perspective is if you're really not doing anything, we're okay, right? But if health forces it or fire forces it, then, you know, I need to read it a little bit more closely. There might be some other ways to...
Judge McCall's?
Yeah, yeah. You know, maybe we're only adding, you know, one receptacle for a stove and off on the other things instead of, you know what I mean? There might be some options that make common sense that the building official can rule on. I just see this commercial, I see this commercial kitchen thing being a real problem for Bellflower's desire to have restaurants, and then just a standard TI where you haven't, you know, you need a break room. Right? I see that as an issue.
Thank you, Alan. The next question from me is on the, let's go towards the slide with the 750 designation. And the, right there, that one. Thank you, Ms. Oba. On this one here, I understand it to be the one story in height. What about existing family dwellings with already two stories or surrounded by two stories? Would that be an exemption? Would that qualify for exemptions as well for this if they stay under 750? Or is it strictly, is the one story, are we able to make a modification here to allow for things of that nature?
I think, as discussed with the soils report before, I think if we were to look at how the code would be written today, the code is written at 500 square feet. That's when the number is. Today, with the requirement of ADUs and the most common size to increase square footage is approximately 700 feet, especially with ADUs. I think today, if the code was to be written, on the CBC was to be written, when it came to liquefaction, it would be based at 750 feet, and that's why I made this decision. And so, what we chose to do for the City of Bellflower is create a prescriptive method. That way, you don't have to get a soils report. We provide and hand out a prescriptive method of what kind of foundation you can use, as long as you're under the 750 feet. So, we're giving options here. We're not just saying you have to have a soils report. So, I think, based on the scenario that you're, the way I choose to look at this and the way I believe it is defined, and I'm going strictly off of originally how the CBC's original ten at the 500 and looking at how bad our liquefaction is here and making that determination. And so, it basically comes down to 700 square feet footprint, no matter how you get it. If we're adding a 700, it's got to be, anything above that has got to have a soils report. Anything over a two-year period. So, if you're going to, you know, try to stair-step several different ADUs, that doesn't work. We need to get a soils report, and then you're good to go.
Right, Mr. Cook, I don't think that was the question. The question was, I'm supportive of, yeah, I understand where we are on the 750, and we're good on that number. The question is if it's an existing two-story and it's under 750, or if the surrounding buildings with, you know, the neighbors to the left, the neighbor to the right, to the, you know, north, south, east, west, whatever way you want to look at it, have two-story buildings. But mainly, the question is for existing two-stories. If they are already existing two-stories, and they, let's say they want to add, you know, a den or, I don't know, patio or some kind of a two-story item, right, that's under 750, more likely going to be 400 or something of that ballpark or less, would it require liquid faction? What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to help us have more clarity in the future in general, right? Because we always run into that where, and so, I'm just also trying to add more flexibility here, if possible.
I think what Councilman Sanchez is trying to get at is if someone has a two-story structure on their property, and they're adding less than 750 square feet to that two-story structure, would they be required to get a soils report in this instance?
So, hopefully, hopefully I can clarify. Councilmember Sanchez, if the addition itself is two-story, then that would trigger a soils report because of the extra load of the second story. The foundation has to be designed to incorporate all the findings of the geotechnical report in order to design the foundation to hold the two stories. Now, if it was a one-story addition of less than 750, you could use the prescriptive.
Right, I understand that.
And not to cause confusion, okay, I think that that's the rule. I think that, could there be, could there be a discussion?
This is the discussion.
Okay. No, then we're going to stick with 750 as it's written.
Is that a state code or is that our code?
That is our code, which is less restrictive than the building code at 500, given our liquefaction.
Yeah, the intent here, like Alan said, the state code actually sets the restriction at 500, and our intent is to be less restrictive of that and say if it's under 750, which a lot of our common projects these days are with an ADU, then we don't necessarily need to do it if you meet these basic standards with the prescriptive standard. So, we're actually being more lenient here.
I see that.
But the primary intent is to get the soils report unless you're in this, not the other way around.
Respectfully, I see that. I do acknowledge that. Not commenting on that. I'm commenting on if, let's say, the mayor who has a two-story home wants to add a back, you know, second story patio to his house, would he be required to pull a, do a soils report because it's technically two stories? I'm trying to get to examples like that, where I'm trying to make it less restrictive even further on our residents because, well, it's quite expensive to build in general. Again, it's just the conversation. Mr. Cook or Alan, Mr. Cook, is saying we can have a conversation. So, is this the platform to have that conversation or not?
Well, I mean, certainly you can have that conversation. As the building code stands, it would be if that addition were 500 square feet, then yes, they would be required to get a soils report. Again, this is being a little bit more lenient because of those certain circumstances that are common here in Bellflower, like an ADU, for example.
So, I think I really am trying and have done my best to try to make things very workable here and be consistent. And I think that's been the biggest issue, is getting consistency here within the City of Bellflower. I think that the choice to go to 750 is, like my statement before, whether it is single story or two-story. You know, when we're talking about geotechnical engineers, we're talking about liquefaction. We're talking about its site-specific. Current example, and I think Lynn would have the exact deflection from the firehouse, literally 400 feet to where the parking garage is, the deflection is huge. It's just shocking in that short john across the street. So, I don't think that next-door neighbors mean anything. And I think where I am right now, where we've decided this is by using geotechnical reports that we already have. We're also using the CBC Building Code, and we're saying, we're going to take a little bit more risk here at 750, but we're still going to hold the two stories in because we should. And then we're going to, this is as far... And then we're going to, this is as far as we can go right now to be comfortable and get the win-win. And that was the goal here.
Okay, so you're, you feel comfortable in your position as a building official to bump up the state's thing from five hundred to seven fifty, and that's where you decided to limit it?
Yeah, and I believe that-
And you're the professional.
Correct, and I believe, and, you know, all the years in construction that I've been involved in. And I believe, I truly believe, if we were to do this today, they would have went to seven fifty, because that's the common choice. Five hundred was the common choice when that was originally-
And you looked at our liquefaction data that we have on file, to come up with that reasonable, okay?
I'm okay with that.
Any other questions to staff before the public hearing?
My regarding the commercial kitchen and-
Oh, you got it, yeah, me too.
Yes.
So the commercial kitchen definition, is that one where you're preparing food for sale? Or would you, a kitchen in a church, or a elk club, or?
It-
You know what I'm saying?
It is a broad definition of the definition of commercial. So it's a residential, it would be a church. It would be, when you look at the definitions of a commercial kitchen within the code, it's the broad swath. And and so I think it causes quite a burden.
So even a residential home being built would require?
Already does.
Oh, it does, so you would have to put in the two twenty?
Already.
And the idea being-
And A D U also, also.
So the idea being all gas appliances are verboten at some point?
At some point in time.
So they haven't started on water heaters yet? Because, you know, they're all gas as well, very few electric.
They have, Councilmember Coops, in a way, they incentivize you-
Oh, I see.
To not have that.
Remember, it all started with garbage disposals.
That's all the question I have. Well, one other side note, I know for a fact that a good chef would never use an electric stove to get the proper-
Well, we know that.
They'd want the control of the gas.
Well, then, every cook out there's got to be retrained somehow to figure out how to do it.
Right.
It's nonsense, but anyway.
Not our problem, huh?
But we live in a nonchalant state, so, yeah.
Sunny's got something, no?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing, Mayor.
Second the motion.
And a motion on the floor by Mayor Protim, Sunny Santinez, and a second by Councilmember Coops, without objection, that'll be the order. Any California haters out there about the gas? California's making us go natural gasless.
Well, we'd have to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second the motion.
Okay, public hearing is closed. It's going to be a long one, isn't it?
We should have Victor do this.
Who's got the wind?
Well, it was ready to read it.
There's no need to read it.
Okay.
Yeah, just-
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the City Council of Bellflower to adopt urgency ordinance number one four five zero, and wait for the reading, and adopt ordinance number one four four nine, which was described earlier by the city manager.
Second the motion.
Motion on the floor by Mayor Protim, Sunny Santinez, and a second by Councilmember Coops. Let's have a roll call, please.
Mayor Protim Santinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Forgot that was a second reading, yeah. Made it easier. Okay, we don't have any ordinances or resolutions for consideration, but we do have a consideration item. Mr. Smoot, would you like to read in thirteen A into the record?
I certainly will, Mr. Mayor. Item thirteen A is consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number nine to agreement file number eight one three in a form approved by the city attorney with Southwest Patrol, adding animal control services and extending the term for security guard services, and to execute amendment number two to the agreement file number six eight five with Turbo Data Systems in a form approved by the city attorney, adding online license, animal licensing services.
Good job.
Mr. McNerney has this presentation for you.
From what I read on the staff report, I think you did a good job too so far, let's hear it.
Well, we're going to see here shortly.
Well, it's going in the right direction, I want to let you know.
Wait till Victor gets a hold of them.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. It's my pleasure this evening to be presenting a long-time coming item regarding animal control. And before I get going, if you do have any questions, please stop me as I go along here. And we also have Mike from Southwest Patrol here as well. So should there be any questions for each of us, we'll get to that probably at the end, but just so we get that sort of housekeeping out of the way. Quick background, for those of you that can recall, back on August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, I presented the Siaka's, at that time, newest contract update, which was for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five for their services. The council informed me quite directly to seek out other opportunities at that time. We did approve Siaka's contract for their services that night. And since that night, I have been researching for a little over a year other alternatives for us to to seek out. The contract which Siaka provided to us for this current fiscal year, we have not signed it, has not come before this council as of yet, and will not be coming before this council, hopefully. The the proposed cost that Siaka was going to be charging was eight hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars, which is an approximate twenty-seven percent increase over the net cost of our previous year's contract from two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, which was six hundred forty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty. So obviously, I did not want to harpoon myself and come to this council and present that number, so I found an alternative for this council to be considering. If we look at what services Siaka has provided us through their contracts in the past, this is a very high-level view of what those services are. They include the operation of an animal shelter. Their shelter location within Downey, California, just just north of us by a little bit. They also provide, this is again through their contract, provide us with one assigned officer for forty hours per week. They also impound all stray animals which are collected within the city, including those that are deceased animals. They also perform criminal investigations for animal cruelty cases. They also enforce the Bellflower Municipal Code, and they also perform all of our animal licensing and fee service collection for those services. It's worth noting that of those high-level services which are offered, Siaka struggles to perform most of them. Most notably, two that I'll point out on that list, which are, one, the provision of a forty-hour-a-week guard or our animal patrol officer. That has not occurred in, I could not tell you how many years from using their services. And also the enforcement of the Bellflower Municipal Code. They take very much a hands-off approach when it comes to any type of enforcement. And I will share also, myself and Mayor Protim Santinez, four or five months ago, I think it was, he and- Two months ago, okay, sooner than I thought. We toured Siaka's facility, and a great facility there. However, the staffing there is lacking significantly. And when we get into the two that I pointed out there, the enforcement of the Bellflower Municipal Code, and also the provision of a forty-hour-a-week guard, when we toured the facility, we physically asked them how many animal patrol officers that they had on staff. And we were told they had five. And that was for servicing fifteen cities. So as you could see, there's no way they can fulfill these contractual obligations which they are asking us to to sign in past contracts. Hence the reason why we're looking for other alternatives to offer that service. To give you somewhat of an idea of what the Siaka numbers, as far as intakes go, this is based on data collection which Siaka provided to me for the last three and a half years of service. So we wanted to get outside the COVID window of time, because the numbers were significantly reduced during that faction of time. So we focused on mostly the last three and a half years. During that timeframe, we went through the numbers. The live dog impounds totaled approximately twenty-two live dogs per month. And live cat impounds totaled approximately twelve per month, with an average of approximately thirty-four live animals taken into custody by Siaka per month. And then their requests for services, and that ranges from everything, from someone calling about how much animal licenses, to someone coming and picking up a stray animal. So the full gamut of services, they average approximately a hundred and fifty calls per month specific just to Bellflower. So this leads me into what our new service model is being proposed. I like to start with visual here. I'm very much a visual learner, so this, when I drafted this, it helped me out tremendously, and I hope it's helping out this council as well as the community watching. This is a visual representation of what this service model will look like. If we start from the very top, the community would be would be making a request for some aspect of animal care services or animal control services. That request would be directed directly to the Public Safety Department. So all of us that work down at the substation, we would be the first point of contact. We would then make a determination, where does that service request go? Is it something that we need to refer to code enforcement? Which we'll get into each one of these individually here in a second. But are we referring it to code enforcement? Are we going to refer that to L.A. County Sheriff's Department? Or are we finally going to send that over to Southwest Patrol, depending on what that level of the request is? And as you can see, there's various arrows which point the lines of communication. Right now, the one benefit thing that we have, especially over with public safety, is all of these partners already have a well-established communication system. We do this every day. So there's nothing new for us to learn about communicating with each other. There's excellent communication between public safety and the code enforcement division, and vice versa. Excellent communication between public safety and the Sheriff's Department, and vice versa, as well as code enforcement in the Sheriff's Department. And then utilizing Southwest Patrol in this new capacity, we have excellent communication with Southwest Patrol. So there's nothing new here really for us to to break apart and and go down and try something different. The one aspect you'll see here, which we are limiting, is the ability for Southwest Patrol to communicate directly with the Sheriff's Department. We would prefer them not to do that. We'd rather have them flow right through the public safety or code enforcement, than we'd flow that back over to the Sheriff's Department for whatever that that need might be. But the Sheriff's Department would still have the ability to work directly with Southwest Patrol, should they need to for an animal control-related item. So now we'll go into each one specifically. So the new service model that's being proposed is the utilization of Southwest Patrol as our animal control service. Southwest Patrol provided a proposal to to myself, and that proposal includes providing one animal control guard for forty hours per week. That guard will be unarmed, they will not be an armed guard. These guards will be well-trained in what they, in control methods of animals, and specifically how to identify illnesses within animals. Because obviously, when we take custody of an animal, or when they take custody of the animal, we don't want them cross-contaminating animals that are healthy versus those that are sick when they are in their custody. Southwest will be providing emergency call-outs on an as-needed, as-requested basis. Those requests would come specifically either from the Sheriff's Department after hours, or would come from the Public Safety Department for their for their services. They would be picking up visibly sick, injured, or physically suffering animals. They would also be picking up stray animals running at large, and removing dead animals. The next key thing here, when we went through this research, the actual provision of the animal control services was not the difficult part. The difficult part was trying to find somewhere to house those animals. That was the hard part. Southwest has solved that problem by, they will be maintaining, again, Southwest will, not the city, but Southwest will be maintaining their own contract with the Society for the Prevention of Cruelty of Animals Los Angeles, which is the S P C A L A. Their location for this area that they're going to be using is on Yukon Avenue in the city of Hawthorne. Reason I put the miles away and minutes is that is where Bellflower residents will need to go to pick up their animals that Southwest impounds. They will no longer be going to Downey, which is a couple miles away. They will be forced to travel a little bit further to retain those animals if Southwest finds them and is unable to return them to their owner here in Bellflower. So again, it's approximately sixteen miles from Bellflower, which is about a thirty-minute drive down the one oh five freeway. The S P C A L A is a fairly robust organization. They will be responsible for housing all live animal impounds by Southwest. They also provide veterinary care and adoption services. And the contract with Southwest is going to have with S P C A is going to be for forty animal, forty live animal drop-offs per month. And that's kind of a key there, because they charge based on number of animals brought in per month. And as you saw from our previous slide, the average over the last three and a half years of intake from Siaka of live animals was probably thirty-four animals a month. So we're right kind of in that sweet zone of costs versus number of animals that the intake would actually be.
Mr. McNerney, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can you bring the previous slide? Since the S P C A L A is located in Hawthorne, which is a thirty-minute drive from Bellflower, how will this work if the animal control guard collects dead animals, sick animals, stray animals during the day? I understand that we are acquiring one vehicle, right, to be used by this animal control guard? So discuss, describe to us, how will this work in terms of collecting these animals during the day? It can be a combination of dead, sick animals, and stray animals.
So, yes, so Mayor Protim Santinez, the Southwest will have a vehicle which has multiple compartments, which are all air-conditioned. And they, in similar fashion to how Siaka does it right now, they're able to section off the animals of where they belong within the truck. So certain, if an animal is, based on their determination, visibly sick, and we don't want to infect other animals if they're in the in the truck, they'll quarantine that animal in an area where it's sort of sealed in its own compartment. The dead animals are sealed in their own compartment, they usually get bagged up, and then they're put in the truck. And then live animals, which appear to be generally healthy, will be in the truck, air-conditioned. And before the end of their shift every single day, will then deposit those live animals over at the S P C A facility.
Oh, so, okay, so he or she will just make one trip from Hawthorne to Bellflower and back to Hawthorne at the end of the shift?
Ideally, yes. If they have to do more, they have to do more, depending on the amount of animals they have in their custody at any given point. Obviously, if an animal is suffering, and we need to get animal care, those would go immediately. We will not wait and leave that animal in the back of a truck while we wait till the end of the day. No, if we, if the guard makes a determination that there's some sort of emergency situation where dogs should get expedited care, then they will do so.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
The deceased animals which Southwest will be collecting, they will be taken to the Pitt Haven Cemetery and crematory. I don't anticipate there being a reason why members of the public will need to go there. Generally, these would be uncollected animals, for lack of a better term, roadkill. And there really shouldn't be a reason why a member of the public would go there, but just for the sake of this conversation, they are located on Figaro Street in the city of Gardena, also approximately about sixteen, fifteen, sixteen miles from Bellflower, also off the one oh five freeway, just south of the freeway, south of the S P C A facility. Another component of this, which at first was a bit of an uphill battle, but we've seen it come to a good resolution on this, even though the Sheriff's Department is the only ones able to do this component, is with our current contractor, Siaka. Their guards currently provide animal cruelty investigations. So they enforce the California Puny Code if someone is found to be mistreating or abusing animals. In this new service model, obviously, Southwest Patrol does not have the legal ability to be enforcing the California Puny Code in that capacity. That would fall to our law enforcement representatives of the L.A. County Sheriff's Department to enforce those provisions. Multiple discussions were had between myself and the department. And just recently, I met with our detective unit and explained where this was going. And at first, as with anything new, a little resistant, until they hear what the volume of caseload this would be. These are minimal cases per year. I think, and based on our conversation with Siaka over a last number of months, the number of of animal abuse cases in Bellflower, which actually resulted in criminal filings, you're lucky there's one per year. And more than likely, it's probably one or two over a five-year period. So there's very few of these that occur. So once that was voiced to the department, to the L.A. County Sheriff's Department, then they are much more on board, because they knew that the volume of calls that would be generated from this would be very minor. They may be tasked with coming over and assisting with code enforcement and various enforcement duties with the Bellflower Municipal Code, but they would take a secondary role in that enforcement mechanism. So they are on board with this, and we will make sure that they are doing what they need to do to ensure that owners of animals or individuals are held responsible and accountable for their unlawful acts should one occur to an animal.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask a question at this point. Mr. McNerney, I would encourage us to look into how, because Siaka itself is a J P A, right? And it's, you know, it's comprised of the original- And it's, you know, it's comprised of the original founding cities and whatnot. And so however they figured out a way to have their, what are they called, their dog catchers?
Their, their, their animal control officers.
Animal control officers.
Police powers.
With police powers? I mean, I, I think that's something that we, with our JPA, or have you already done that?
Well, so I, I can answer that question. So the, the SIACCA, yeah, I'm sorry.
You know where I'm going?
Taken internally?
No, no, our JPA that we have with-
Oh, oh, well, there is, there are some discussions on that.
Okay, am I jumping the gun? Okay.
Forward thinker.
Forward thinking, thank you.
I'll, I'll answer two parts to your question. One, so, so what, what the requirements are in order to have staff to have the ability to enforce the California Penal Code. One is you would have to have your staff, what's called PC-832 trained. Some of our code enforcement staff are trained for that. For example, I, myself am trained for that. The, the issue then comes into, and this may be, I, I don't want to flip it to Carl, but this may be a legal issue here, is we, you would have to have a prosecuting attorney to file those cases. So SIACCA, for example, the name might, might be familiar, but Jim Edgar, former attorney that Bellflower used to use, that is their prosecuting attorney for SIACCA, and he's able to file those criminal felony filings on those cases. And correct, Ron Carl, I don't believe we have the ability as a city to enforce felony violations of the penal code.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, absent DA permission, we don't have authority to file any state violations, whether they be felonies or misdemeanors. We prosecute municipal code violations. I am curious about how that's able to occur. So it's something that we can certainly look into if, if the city council's interested.
Yeah, I, I definitely would be interested in learning, because obviously, SIACCA has found a way to do it. Bottom line is, it's a quality, a quality of life issue. Our sheriffs are, you know, they've got a lot going on, fully support them. So if we can figure out a way to kind of resolve this on our own and kind of be-
I think this is a first, if this goes tonight, this is the first step of going somewhere.
Sure, absolutely.
And I already thought of something that we could, in the future, add or whatever, which it could, this thing could be a savior for a lot of cities.
All right, perfect, thank you.
And then part two-
But I think you're going in the right direction.
Oh, part two, yes. Part two to your question regarding incorporating this into the, the joint powers authority, that has been discussed. It's, I don't know how willing the other two cities might be to jump onto this so, so soon. But as time goes, and if this does build momentum, I, I could see that being a possible solution, so, yes.
Keeping in mind, one of those other cities is one of the founding members of SIACCA as well, so that presents its own challenges. But certainly, it's worth keeping in mind, this approach to this service is certainly outside the box. This is a new way of looking at how we provide these services to the community. And I think we will certainly get questions, as is the Bellflower tradition or way of doing things. We like to think outside the box, we're the first ones to do something, and this is one of those, one of those things.
You just, you just stole my closing line.
Mayor, follow-up question regarding the, the one case that was prosecuted. Is it because there's lack of animal control officers, or sheriff's department, or prosecutors, things like that? Has there been many, many violations of cruelty that were in the department because of lack of resources?
Possibly, possibly. And we're a little bit on the inside knowledge of some of this, because I don't know if the council's aware of this, but two of our current, well, current public safety manager for, for, for our department, and also one of our code enforcement officers, they both previously worked for SIACCA for a number of years. So, so we have a bit of an inside knowledge on, on a lot of this.
I'm aware of that.
Yeah, which is hoping to guide some of our, our trials and tribulations here.
Do they know why the system is so broke over there?
Ah, they do.
Really?
I won't go into that, but I, I will, they, they do, yes. But-
So, so to follow that question, so if we have more eyes and ears, there could be more prosecution?
Potentially.
Potentially, okay.
Yeah, and, and I will say, based on that knowledge of, that my own staff has shared regarding their time with SIACCA, the, and I don't want to paint a, a broad brush here, but overall, their general sentiment was over the years, was SIACCA did not prioritize criminal filings of these cases. Their purpose was the saving of the animal that was in need of care. Taking care of the person was, was secondary to that. So oftentimes, they sought the surrender, self-surrender of the animal into their custody, and that was as far as it went. Even though the person potentially could have committed a crime and probably could have been prosecuted for it, their goal was the saving of the animal and getting it out of that situation.
I see.
Which is what they prioritize. So that also could contribute to their lower numbers. They weren't so much trying to get someone tossed in jail versus saving, saving the animal's life.
Okay.
Next aspect of this service model, if we look at, is going to be Bellflower code enforcement's involvement. The, right now, again, I'm not trying to, to bash on SIACCA, but their, their responsiveness to our Bellflower municipal code violations of the animal code is, is nearly not nonexistent. With this new service model, this would transition tho, that enforcement practice over to the code enforcement division. And some of those items which they would be, would be looking into would be dogs reported off-leash, animals that don't have any licenses, barking dog complaints, and, and one that just sort of happened this last week is a property which had too many animals on the property. So those would be ones that were, that would be coming through our office to handle. Should this be approved tonight, there would be an update done to our animal section of the Bellflower Municipal Code, which is section six. So be prepared for that if that, if that's how this council decides to vote today. We would come back with some sort of update, removing outdated codes and updating language to, to show what this new model is, is showing. And then also, SIACCA has not conducted any canvassing of licenses in, in the community for a number of years. I think it's been approximately five years or more, they haven't had any canvassing activity within the city. That would change, obviously, because code enforcement would be doing that with the assistance of Southwest Patrol. So that would start up almost immediately our ability to, to do that. I did notate in the staff report, which I didn't notate on my slide here, which is worth pointing out, that of course, this will increase the workload for code enforcement. I know code enforcement is under kind of a bit of scrutiny over the last number of, of, of months and years. But the council, you have already approved a secondary, I'm sorry, a fifth code enforcement officer for this upcoming fiscal year, so fiscal year '26, '27. It's, in my opinion, that will be sufficient to take over the increased workload regarding the animal sections that would come through the code enforcement department. So we may be treading water for a little bit, but once we get that person on board, I think that'll be sufficient for, for our needs, at least in that regard. If we look at what the public safety department's involvement's going to be, we would be taking over internally the entire operation of the animal licensing program. Again, based on numbers provided by SIACCA, they process approximately 3,500 licenses per year. And then also, the public safety, as I went through with that sort of flow, flow chart, is they, we would serve as a prime point of contact for all community complaints, phone calls, concerns would flow through the public safety department. We are recommending to hire one additional part-time administrative assistant to help with that increased workload. And I'll, again, give that with a bit of an asterisk. Right now, that's what we're thinking is going to work. Where this might be, six months from now, a year from now, I don't know. And be prepared that should there be an even bigger workload than what we're anticipating, we may need to come back and ask for an additional staff member beyond what's being requested here tonight. So just as an FYI on that, that there may be something more to come in the future on this. This chart here just basically summarizes what we sort of just went over. On the left-hand side, you have the, the overall higher arcing services which SIACCA was providing. Again, the shelter, I'm sorry, the animal control shelter, deceased animal pickups, the provision of one officer 40 hours a week, pick up stray dogs and deceased animals, animal cruelty investigations, enforcing Bellflower Municipal Code, and performing dog licenses. SIACCA provided all of those services on their, on their contracts. Now you look at the right-hand side of who would be, who is now providing that service in this new model. And you can see how that is split up among the different agencies. With the SPCA LA conducting shelter activity, the Pitt Haven Cemetery taking the dead animals, Southwest Patrol is doing the provision of the 40-hours-a-week guard, as well as picking up the stray and deceased animals. LA County Sheriff's Department doing the criminal investigations. Bellflower Code Enforcement doing the municipal code violations. And then lastly, Bellflower Public Safety performing the overall animal licensing fees, and also the responsiveness to the community through the, the phone calls and dispatching the calls out.
Right.
Yes.
Who's going to be doing the, the spay and neuter of animals?
In this current model, nobody.
Nobody.
So the individuals would still be able to go to any facility that they wish. SPCA does provide that service.
So they need to go to Hawthorne?
Potentially.
Or your vet.
Okay.
Or your vet.
Or your vet, okay. Same thing with vaccination?
Correct.
On your own?
And then SPCA does offer that as well.
Uh-huh, okay. So how about potential for pet adoption? Will that be handled by SPCA LA?
SPCA also offers pet adoptions, yes. Every, every licensed animal control shelter is obligated to offer a certain criteria of those services. And the SPCA is, is a licensed facility which offers adoption, veterinary care, spay-neuter programs, they offer all that through their facility.
Okay, okay. All right.
One element of this, which I think is worth noting, the two items on there, you see feral cat removal and wild animals. These are common complaints which, which we receive, and I, and I would presume SIACCA receives as well. In this new service model, there's, at, at least initially, there's not much change over the provision of services that SIACCA did with these two categories compared to what Southwest is, is offering to provide as well. If we look first at the feral cat removal, Southwest will be, will be conducting the similar approach that SIACCA did, which is basically, and I kind of wrote that there as a nutshell, if it's healthy, leave it alone. The one aspect here, though, is, which is a drastic difference between SIACCA and Southwest, is with Southwest, we have the opportunity to grow programs. SIACCA, we didn't have that opportunity.
Take it or leave it.
Correct. So we have the opportunity, once things get up and running here, to offer a spay-neuter program for feral cats. It really just comes down to a capacity question of a shelter and a cost question for this council. But that's the benefit here, is we can grow these various programs because Southwest is able to grow with us. In our current model with SIACCA, there was no growth. It was do what we want to do from SIACCA's perspective, and that's it. So we're, we're very much locked in, this kind of frees us up a little bit. And then secondarily, that is wild animals. Oftentimes, people think we can trap wild animals and relocate them somewhere else. Unfortunately, you, you can't. State law prohibits that. If it's, if it's a healthy, like, for example, a coyote, or a possum, or a skunk, you just can't capture that as, as an agency and then go and relocate that somewhere else. But the one aspect that, that Southwest will be doing, of course, if any of those animals are observed to be sick, injured, or deceased, they will collect them and take them to the, take them for the, either proper care or disposal, whichever the case might be.
I have a question on that. What about, obviously, let's just say a turtle, someone's pet, whatever, but it's out, you know, turtles burrow, turtles, turtles do different stuff. I don't even know how SIACCA would handle it, so I'm just asking the question. Is there any kind of a thought process on how they would handle something like that? Obviously, if it's a turtle or a- We had a call here in Bellflower with one of our rental properties, there was a snake in their yard. And it must have been someone's pet that got out, but it was just laying in their yard. It wasn't like a rattlesnake or anything like that, but we were just like, oh, call SIACCA.
So, so, yes, so i- in those types of situations, you could still contact us, and Southwest Patrol still will respond. The interesting thing with the SPCA LA is they will take possession of those sort of oddball animals at a significant penalty cost. And Mike, if I'm correct, is it $1,000 an animal? $1,200, well, they got up. So, so they will charge them, presumably then pass the charge on to us, $1,200 per exotic-type animal. So if we bring them a turtle, that's probably going to be considered an exotic animal, the charge of that care would be $1,200.
Now, would that then be passed on to the person who eventually comes to find their turtle and-
Well, hopefully, if we can find the owner before we even take it there, that would, that would be ideal.
Right.
We don't want to take it into custody and then have to end up housing it and paying that cost.
Okay.
So, but i- in the unfortunate event that we have to, and then if a owner does happen to show up, absolutely. I, I would say we would pass that cost on to that customer.
Put a petting, petting zoo over at Parks and, you know, Parks and Rec.
Don't, don't give him ideas, because he will.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of serious. A holding pen?
Going to pretend I didn't hear that.
So, so in the meantime, the city would pay for that if it's not, if the owner cannot be traced?
Initially, Southwest would be charged that cost because they would be the ones maintaining their contract. Presumably, unless Mike's shaking his head no, we, we would be charged that cost eventually.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mike, you want to come?
While he's coming up here, when was the last time we had an exotic animal?
Oh, it, it, it happens.
I know it happens, but, you know, we didn't have one on the five-year count we had on the slide.
No, they, they list them as slightly different, they do list them as like, as like an other category.
Right, yeah, we didn't have any, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the idea is, we have different things in place to try to track them down. We have scanners that will scan, you know, the chip things, which is one of the requirements. So trying to locate them and not take them is, is the first factor.
That was one of my questions, I can knock it out right now, so the, the, you can actually, chip reader, you have a rip, you have the subscription to go in the database and find it. So that's why I might, instead of driving all the way to Hawthorne at the end of the day, you can maybe, we can, we can have a holding pen or grow this into later or something and kind of keep the dog comforted until-
Yes, yes, we've already purchased a-
You already thought of that.
A couple of them, we already have them in our possession. They read different codes, there's only one code that will not read, which is a, an issue with just that one chip. Just, yeah, so. But it'll read all the other, the, I think it's 10, 12, and 15 code, I believe.
Does your company do this now, or is this just putting it together for Bellflower?
We're putting it together for Bellflower.
Sweet, I love that. I was glad to hear that.
We're the first one.
I'm really glad to, you guys glad to hear that?
Of course, yeah.
We don't want no experience, we want to, we want to figure it out. With experience comes rules and people, bad habits that people have.
Mr. Mayor, when we brought on Southwest Patrol as first ones to be of the cities-
We're the first one.
Right, and then Paramount did it, and then Saritas did it, and Lakewood did it. So I'm, this could, you know, you can see what we're faced with with SIACCA, it's not a good thing. And cities are going to recognize what we're doing. Do you have the ability to accept others beyond us, and will it dilute your service?
So we've also started the city of Lynnwood, they are-
Where's Glenwood?
Lynnwood.
Lynnwood's good.
They are purchasing another truck, their code enforcement does their animal control as well. So that is already in discussion if this does go, get, get moving.
But I, I think that you're going to find out you're very popular when you have the pricing that's a third less than what we have for lesser service. I mean, it'll be a whole different genre for you.
More service for less cost, that's the idea.
Right. Now, we have the ability, because we're basically inventing our own business, to redo the pricing on licenses, correct? Now, we have the model of what SIACCA was charging, are we going to use that same model?
Currently, yes, we're proposing no increase to the animal licensing fees, but of course, if this body would like that to happen, we could perhaps bring that back forward to you guys.
Well, I'd be interested, I was talking to your predecessor, Joel Hockman, and Placentia charges $375 unless your dog is spayed or neutered. That was a, a real advantage to have that done.
So I, I figured this question was going to be asked, so I figured I would have that on there.
Unaltered, 125.
As you see where we are, the, the, the items highlighted in yellow are the lowest prices, and the items highlighted in red are the highest for each category.
Look at Long Beach gives a discount for senior dogs to be unaltered. Maybe they're out of business at that age.
Really? Now, is a senior dog going to be 55 or more, why, why do they qualify here, you know? Yeah.
It's a senior discount.
So, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, this is an item, the next time we do our fee studies, this is something, the same way we study any other fee, and we have to establish those fees based on the cost of service, this is something that we could review at that point, too.
Depends on what our decision tonight is.
What we have.
Yeah, currently, we use what we have.
But we get to keep it all, as opposed to share it with SIACCA.
Yes.
That's correct.
Because they were taking the best part of it.
How many more slides do you got right now? Mike, stay here.
I have a question for Mike, I have a question.
I got two more.
Two more? Just want you to stay up here, because I think you're going to get some questions. He's got two more slides, let's get through those, and then I'll get-
So, second to last slide here, we have the actual cost of what this contract would look like, actually, it's fairly favorable. The first-year cost for fiscal year '25, '26 have been prorated for only eight months of service. That's going to be from November, we're projecting to have this start November 1st of this year, running through June. And then the cost for the second year, '26, '27 fiscal year, are the full-year costs. The, for animal control services through Southwest, it's not to exceed $410,000 first year. Uh, the, for animal control services through Southwest, it's not to exceed four hundred and ten thousand, uh, first year. We also have a, um, the licensing aspect will be handled by our, our current parking permit contractor, Turbo Data Systems, who we've used for almost a decade now. I spoke with them and explained that the dog licensing is very similar to our per parking, um, uh, online platform, and they agreed, and they said they could more than likely convert their parking permit platform to an animal licensing platform. So if it gets approved tonight, uh, they're going to, they've already built out a test, um, environment for me to go through. They're gonna do the entire thing and process that out. So that'll be a first for them as well. They've never done animal licensing, uh, to this degree, so we'll see how that works out. I'm fairly confident, Will, our staff has a fami- familiarity with it as well as the community does as well, and going on a purchasing permits. Um, and then we have the part-time ministry assistant one. Uh, we also have other incidental costs. Uh, this would be for purchasing a dog tags, uh, because the city does have to purchase some dog tags, which when people purchase their license to give out. And then also in situations where should, uh, Mike's team pick up a severely injured animal and needs immediate, um, veterinary care and it's too far to go to the SPCA, we would take it to a local vet hospital, which we could be incurred some cost, uh, related to that. But again, unknown how many of those animals would, would, would fall into that category. So total cost of first year, uh, roughly four hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred dollars. Uh, currently, we already have budgeted for this fiscal year, six hundred and seventy-five thousand for Siaka services, which is, we've spent nothing of that. And then projected revenue, uh, this year for dog licensing projected to be seventy thousand. So first year costs, we're looking to save two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars over what was, uh, uh, budgeted for Siaka services of the six seventy-five. And then again, second year, uh, very similar numbers, except they're gonna be for the full, uh, fiscal year. We're projecting the licensing revenue to increase because we will probably be doing a better job than Siaka is currently doing. Um, and then projected savings would be, uh, approximately two hundred and twenty-one thousand, uh, second year.
Uh, Brian, question about, so, so year one bud- year, year one's budget, um, includes the purchase of a vehicle?
It does, yes. One hundred thousand dollars, yes.
So who owns the vehicle?
Southwest will own the vehicle.
Does that include the, uh, the cost of operations, um, gas, uh, insurance?
Did you include that cost?
Yes, that'll all be included.
All inclusive?
All-inclusive, yeah.
In, in the...
Okay. Labor's everything.
Okay, that's good. It's part of that, part of that line.
It's part of the four hundred and ten.
Okay, okay, good.
Sonny, did you say we would buy the unit and they would own it?
They'll buy it.
So we, we have, just for insurance purposes, we have to have it under our names. We're, our officers are driving it, so, uh, it'll be in our name. It's under, it's already been purchased.
City of Bellflower owns the vehicle.
City of Bellflower does own the vehicle, and we will put, you know, the logo on that and...
Ju- just to clarify, so, so we're actually not purchasing the vehicle for them. Uh, we're simply fronting them the money for them to go purchase the, the vehicle in Southwest Patrol's name, their insurance.
They own it.
They would own it, yes, yeah. We're fronting that money for that vehicle to only be used in Bellflower, uh, during the term of this whole, whole entire contract.
But should they contact, let's say, well, I don't, I hope it doesn't happen. Let's say, you don't wanna do it anymore after two years. So does the, uh, the vehicle goes back to the city?
No, the vehicle is one hundred percent theirs.
Correct.
It's, yeah.
But that hundred thousand is built into this product.
It's built in the four hundred and ten first year cost.
Everything.
Yep.
Okay, so I get, I understand the part, they purchase a vehicle, it's, it's in, built into the cost, all that. What about when a secondary vehicle is needed five years down the road? Would we then have to purchase another vehicle, or would that then be at their expense?
Uh, that would be up to a, a contract, negotiation, but currently, we, we have not negotiated any of that sort, but that would be something we would take into...
Similar to a, a de- when you get a deputy, you get the car. We don't own the car.
Yeah.
You get a deputy and a car all day, and then it goes back.
Okay.
In a way, it's a good way of looking at it, Mr. Mayor, because it, it, just similar to Sheriff's Contract, in a way, you know, we're, Mike's coming forward Southwest Patrol and saying, we could offer this service, but we need you guys to pay for the vehicle, and that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
Sure, the only difference would be that it's a public agency versus a private agency.
Correct.
So I wanna make sure that this can't be seen, Mr. Berger, as any form of, you know, of, uh, using tax dollars for private gain.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so as you recall, we're now a charter city, so it's up to the council to make a determination whether or not it's a gift of public funds.
Well, obviously, it's, it's a discount. If we buy the truck, we only owe three ten.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing that at least one member believes that it's not, so I...
So then my next question is, on that note, if, if we're funding the initial purchase of the truck at four ten, why is our cost going up significantly, not significantly, but why is our cost going up on fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Eight months.
Yeah, the first year's all eight months.
See the asterisk at the top? Prorated.
It's not for a full year.
So it's actually two hundred and ten for the first, except without the vehicles, two hundred and ten over eight months. So it's very close. The difference is fifteen thousand dollars increase.
You've done the math?
For year two, yes, sir.
Alright.
You're counting.
No, I know, that's why you think I'm asking. As a mayor, Proton is comfortable with these numbers.
Fifteen, okay.
Yeah, but Brian, you said that six seventy-five has not been spent.
You bought a truck in the first year, and it's for two years. You see that?
I can see it.
But we're, the whole six seventy-five is not still there.
It, no, right now it is, yes.
It's in the budget.
Yes.
Well, I mean, we have been paying for four months worth of Siaka.
No, we have not.
We, well, they've been performing in a haphazard way, but we have not paid. But we owe them some money for four months of work, do not...
Ostensibly, ostensibly, yeah, we have, uh, been presented a contract for your consideration, which has not come to you from Siaka. We have not signed any contract with Siaka. To the extent they've been providing services for the last few, few months, there's an argument to be made. They've been doing so without a contract in place. So...
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's more than an argument. Absent a binding contract, we have no obligation to pay for anything.
That's a good parting shot, isn't it?
I mean, we won't be, we better make sure this works, because we can't go back.
We're not coming back.
But I, I'm sure that, I'm sure that we pulled the item and we did, we're doing this.
If it doesn't work, then Brian's gonna be the dog catcher.
We used to have one of those.
All duties aside.
I, I, I think it's your next slide, but about, um, communication strategies. As most people in Bellflower, if, as a, as a resident, if I saw a dog on the ground, some guy hit by a car, whatever, I would, my instant head says, call Siaka. That, that's, that's what we've all done forever, whatever. How will we let our community know that not only is it not called Siaka, but this is the actual number that you can call?
Uh, uh, my truthful answer is gonna be, it's gonna be difficult. Um, I mean, this is a thirty-year contract. We're looking to separate from and go somewhere else. It's gonna be difficult to reteach the community after thirty years of always calling the same resource to now all of a sudden pivoting somewhere else.
Well, I imagine this truck is gonna be, you know, wrapped, be wrapped, I guess, be, look nice, and be square box with some advertising, and, you know, it'll, it'll look, it's gonna be an eye catcher. Right now, the Siaka trucks, everybody sees those and knows what they are. So eventually, that'll be the best advertising we got with the phone number on it.
Yep. So, uh, and then to, to that end also, we, we would aim to, i- if approval is given tonight, um, at a minimum, we wanna do a thirty-day runout period of getting the message out pretty much every single day. And, uh, and thankfully, we still have a good relationship and still a relationship with Tripe, uh, with Tripepe Smith, excuse me, and we would be sitting down with them to come up with some sort of communication strategy to get this out there. But I, I will say, i- it's going to be difficult. Um, people are still gonna call Siaka, uh, i- if this goes through, you know, six months from now, um, because people can be difficult to retrain. And it will be a, a length of time before we really see that probably changing. And I would say, you know, being the first to do something different comes with a lot of unknown territory.
Yeah.
So before Ryan stole my words earlier, I, I, I will say, and this, this is kinda finish my presentation here, but, you know, this is a first of its kind. Uh, we're, we're kinda sticking our necks out there to see where this goes. And I will say, there are gonna be some speed bumps along this whole thing. Um, there's probably some aspects that we're not quite seeing out there that will come very quickly at us and we're gonna see it very quickly, very soon. But I'm very confident in my staff's ability and my ability, and also Mike's team's ability to address those concerns as they pop up. So I think you, everyone here as a council wants out-of-the-box thinking. This is it. This is your out-of-the-box thinking right here. I don't think we can get any crazier than this. And, and we'll see, we'll see where it goes. So...
That's encouraging.
Well, I was thinking if, a way that we could maybe get the word out or whatever, is even, I don't know, something to every household, obviously. A mailer, a magnet, I don't know, something that...
Everything will be utilized, everything.
And PJ's, uh, recreation brochure.
Yes.
Yeah.
It'll be his picture in front of a truck saying, call me with your animal.
We could have Santa Claus come to the tree lighting in the truck.
Yes.
Oh, how funny.
I like that.
Is it, is it like a fire truck?
It will be, it will be a pretty, it's a pretty obvious truck.
Yeah, square box.
Already getting, it does, to, to go back and answer one of the other questions, it is a six-compartment truck. It's being built and...
Oh, it's already been built, huh?
Oh, yeah, it should be delivered probably within the next month.
Nice, okay.
Apparently, there's a back, uh, log on animal control, so...
I didn't realize they were air-conditioned.
They are air-conditioned.
Got it. So, um, this truck, since it's gonna be, it's on the fast track, it's either we're gonna get it or Lynwood's gonna get the truck, right?
But, uh, I think they, they put an order in a long time ago. They're doing their own thing.
Well, you've already ordered another one just in case this goes.
Well, we've, this is, uh, just with you guys, this was just kinda brought up with them.
Okay, this is our repu- our reputation with you guys is you decided to pull the trigger on it.
We have nothing going on with them. Their code enforcement does all their stuff right now, so...
So we're still the first one?
Yes, you will be the first one.
I'm sure.
First one for everybody.
Well, we don't want anybody else getting this truck, guys.
You know, you know.
Yeah.
It depends on our vote.
And Mr., and I hope Mr. Coops alluded to, you know, w- when you first started in Bellflower, then you went to Paramount, then you got Lakewood and stuff like that, you gotta remember, this takes off, you gotta give us ground for the pricing, you know what I mean?
I, I tell Brian all the time, and he ma- he, he reiterates it all, all the time.
You don't let him forget, huh?
Make sure they know that Bellflower, yeah, Bellflower was the first one.
The pioneers, okay. Um, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Yes.
Uh, can you show the first slide? The very first one? Oh, no, 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 the chart, the chart.
The chart?
The chart.
Chart?
There you go, there you go. Alright, so, so the heart of this operation is this public safety department, correct? So there'll be a separate phone number or the same phone number for public safety?
It, it'll be the same, it'll be the same phone number for public safety, except within our phone tree, we have an option, which will be like, e- existing right now, we have an option for animal control. When you hit that option, I think it's option six, just to throw it out there.
So someone will always answer the, the phone?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. No matter what, it'll, it'll ring to the main line, and whoever at the substation will be answering that phone call.
So by asking for one part-time staff, there'll always be coverage during the day?
Correct.
Five days a week?
During the business hours, correct.
We're covered?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, the second question I have is, so, um, so this, the, oh, I mean, so you answered the question already in terms of we are the first one. So the administrative assistant will be on, how many hours will this person be working?
Uh, we would maximize them out at twenty-nine hours per week.
Okay, okay, being part-time?
Correct.
Okay, see. Alright, that, that is good.
And keep in mind, that may adjust over time as we see how this plays out too.
We therefore wondered very, very, Brian, earlier, so, yeah, I, I think I'm ready for that. Uh, okay. And you answered a question about the vehicle. But overall, um, I really appreciate the presentation, and, uh, Brian, I cannot thank you enough for looking into this. As you know, this is very close to my heart, and I asked you to visit Siaka. One thing that I would like to emphasize in Siaka is since we are not one of the founding members...
Don't we know that?
I kinda, I kinda, I kinda feel that, uh, we were treated like second-class citizens. Because number one, we don't have a seat at the table. The board of directors, they make their own decision. We are not aware, we are basically a customer of Siaka, which I, I didn't like that in the first place. I, I want to be on the table because the saying goes, if you're not on the table, you're on the menu. So anyway, so I really appreciate, um, you thinking outside the box, and I think you came up with a very, very viable solution. One thing that I want to emphasize here is, um, you showed a chart earlier in terms of the, the different kinds of services. Is there, is there any kind of service that will be left behind or be a gap in service at all? Because I wanna make sure that our residents get a similar level of service. I know there's gonna be bumps in the, especially in the first...
Better service.
Better service.
It's gotta go be better.
I know. In, in, initially, it's gonna be, there's gonna be bumps in the road, so I don't expect to be very good right away. I, I want to be realistic. There's gonna be a lot of gaps somehow. Hopefully, not, not a lot, but, uh, I'm looking for, is there anything that you can think of? That we may have missed?
So right now, I would say the core services which Siaka provided are being addressed. There's some secondary services which they offered, which were coming to, Siaka did, uh, they came to community events, offered a little adoption clinics at, say, Parks and Rec events. They did spay and neuter clinics where they actually would come out to locations. That will be somewhat lost in this, because I don't believe SPCA, um, has the, the, the ability to come out and do those large-scale events of that nature. So, um, like, we used to have, um, Siaka come out to our National Night Out, uh, event every year, and they would have an adoption of some, they would bring an assortment of animals there for people to look at. That would be lost. Uh, but the core services of what would be done here as far as picking up those stray animals, picking up those animals which are sick or injured, picking up tho- those deceased animals, that will be addressed.
Okay. But down the road, ones, I'm sure this is gonna be, i- it seems like you were very successful in terms of providing the, um, security services to our city and our neighboring cities also. And I'm hopeful that, um, that kind of service will, will, will stay, uh, especially with this, um, um, animal control. But down the road, I'd like to see, not right away, down the road, ones become very successful, to see some kind of a, um, kind of a community event where they have some kind of this spay, neuter event, things like that, to add more quality, uh, in terms of the level of service that you provide in conjunction with SPCA LA. Not right away, but, um, some down, sometime down the road.
Absolutely.
Okay. That'll be that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Mayor Proton, if I may piggyback on that. Um, with relations to that comment and also communications, I would say that there are nonprofits out there that we could, you could partner with from the get-go or down the line at some point in time to work with these kind of situations. Um, on your communications, I would encourage you to work with Tripepe Smith on how you, you know, one thing I heard right now was your, your, your line of communication, your hotline, for lack of a better word. If you gotta go through, you know, six different things, I, you know, six, you know, option one, option two, option three, option... I'm pretty sure our IT department could figure it out a way where you can just have a direct line, so that when you're promoting this, especially in the first, you know, first get-go of that, or the first go at it, you know, it's its own line, kinda like the graffiti hotline and the graffiti and bulky item.
If the red light lights up, that's that line.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just, you know, I think...
Five lights on a phone.
Right.
You know, or more.
No, I'm talking about from the consumer side.
Yeah, well, you know what, yeah, because it's, you know, it's that...
Oh, got it, yeah.
That phone, you know what line it is, only, you know what number that is, that's the dog pound number.
I think that would be a little bit more helpful.
And we could set something like that up, because I know for code enforcement, it's like that, it's a direct line.
Yeah, just do a direct line.
We could easily set something up like that.
I personally, I, I dislike those ten different options.
My phone tree?
No, no. It takes two, three minutes to get to the person, you know, it's like, oh, no, make it direct.
And then, and then you have to leave a message.
Yeah, and then you have to leave a message after all, yeah.
And pray they call back.
I know, exactly. But, uh, you, those would be my advice. And again, just work with the, the experts on that, Tripepe Smith, right, on how to market this or communicate this out. And then that's it. Um, I'm, oh, I'll say this, I'm very glad and thankful that we all collectively pulled this item, um, at that meeting and said, you know, let's go figure something out. Let's try something different, try something new on top of that.
It was a three-two vote, if I remember, a, a year ago, August.
Was it?
Yeah, three-two to, to cancel it, and then it was me and you, I think. I know I was a no.
To, to cancel it.
Yeah, to cancel it, yeah. It only made it by one vote.
I voted to cancel it.
Huh? Yeah. Okay, whatever.
One of those things. We saw what happened.
I know what side of the fence I was on anyway. Maybe it was four-one. So Wendy, do you have anything while I'm on this side?
No, I think we pretty well.
Okay.
It looks like something we need to do.
Okay, Mr., uh...
I'm done.
Okay. I, then I have a, then I have a couple of questions, so... First, the forty-hour truck a week, are we gonna have a Monday-Friday truck, or is it gonna be split, no truck on one day, work two days, have a no truck, or is it gonna, it's gonna be wait and see which days it is? Is it gonna be a Monday-Friday truck or...
Right now, Mike and I haven't quite discussed that, but more than likely, it's gonna fall under, under one or two schedules, uh, either Monday through Friday, or, or a Tuesday through Saturday type things, depending on where the call volume goes, so...
Okay, that's fair.
But it will be a, a twenty-four hour, is, if something comes up in the middle of the night.
Right, yeah, yeah, emergencies. And then my last thing is, I know, I don't even know if Siaka does it anymore, but when you have a, a cat problem around your house, it usually gets bad, you know, as there's, it's a handful of feral cats or whatever. Used to be able to go to Siaka and get a cat trap, and then they would give it to you, loan it to you, or, you know, and then you'd come to use it, and then you would take the trap to them. Is that something we, in the future, that we may be able to do, or...
Uh, so two parts to that question. One, Siaka did offer that, however, that not anymore.
Oh, they don't do it no more?
But, but two, uh, yes, that's something that we could grow this into. It just becomes, like I said earlier, a capacity and a cost question.
Okay. And then, yeah, then... Okay, and then, yeah, it's, you know, I'm, I'm of belief this, get this thing started and see how it goes, because it's six months to a year before we can really, you know, wanna add anything to it, we'll know, we'll know six months in, hey, this is working, or it's not, or we gotta adjust it, or let's enhance it, got it?
With, Mr. Mayor, would you like to entertain a motion?
Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
You wanna hear the whole public?
Oh.
No. Anybody in, in the audience, we almost forgot the audience, did wanna come on, put their, say, a spiel?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing?
It's not a public hearing, I don't think, 'cause it's a consideration item, we're just inviting.
Oh. Sorry, guys.
That's because we had the other ones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, and then council members, I am not a Siaka fan by any means, I think this is a wonderful plan.
Well, you're in the club.
Yeah. I know.
Who is?
But my, my big concern is for, like, if somebody's cat gets out, and they get picked up at Siaka, it's easy to go pick them up from Bellflower. As it stands with the new plan, you have to go to Gardena and stuff, I mean, for me, I'd go to the end of the world, get my cats back, or if I had dogs, I'm just concerned for some people, it may be not as convenient for them. I don't know, I mean, I, it's worth a try, and hopefully people, that's, that's just what I was thinking when I was seeing how far some of these places were like SPCA.
That's why you heard us talking about if there's gonna be a chip reader involved, and there's, there is, they've got a couple of chip readers and a subscription service, and before that dog, or cat, or loved one is transported anywhere, it's gonna find out if it's gonna have a home close, and they can make that phone call during that day and have it picked up.
Okay.
Because it's a common sense, it's less work to do it that way.
Yeah, okay, but I think this is a.
Yeah, but society.
Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful idea.
Most pets got chips in them now.
So, thank you for, for thinking of this and putting it in motion.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anybody else wanting to chime in? I don't know if Fred was coming or not. Alright, okay, did you have something on your mind there, Victor?
Yeah, I was gonna.
Oh, yeah, I was making a motion to, uh, I'll make a mo-
The old guy's reminding the young guy.
It's been a long Monday. Uh, Mr. Mayor, yes, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number nine to agreement file number eight-one-three in a form approved by the city attorney with Southwest Patrol, Inc., adding animal control services and amending the term for security guard services, and execute, to execute amendment number two to agreement file number six-eight-five with Turbo Data Systems in a form approved by the city attorney, adding online animal licensing services.
I'll second.
Motion on the floor by Councilmember Sanchez, and a second by Councilmember Morris. Call roll, please.
Mayor Protem Santinas.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Morse.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Dutton.
Aye. It's a great day, today, this evening. Okay, thirteen A, Mr. Smoot?
Uh, I believe that item was thirteen.
Thirteen B.
Yeah, thirteen B, exactly.
Thirteen B.
This is consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number six to agreement file eight-five-three in a form approved by the city attorney with Mercy House Living Centers to extend the term for temporary shelter operator services at New Hope Temporary Shelter, and Wong Su's gonna go ahead and take this presentation, and Timothy, who you all know, is here to answer questions as needed.
Mr. Mayor, I need to excuse myself, I have a property adjacent to the shelter, so I'm conflicted out, and I'll be out of the room.
Okay, let the record reflect that Councilmember Coops is gonna recuse himself for this item?
Don't forget me.
We'll miss you.
Never. Take it away when you're ready there, Wong Su.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Approximately a month ago, Timothy and I were here on the August twenty-fifth City Council meeting, and during that City Council meeting, um, we presented the New Hope Shelter data, and at the end of that meeting, City Council directed City staff to come back with alternative proposals for the extension of our shelter operators Mercy House for an, an additional one year. This chart, uh, that is displayed tonight is actually, is detailed in your staff report, page number three, um, and we have received two proposals from Mercy House for the extension of their contract. The first, uh, the first proposal is to maintain their services at status quo, and that proposal came in at approximately above two-point-two million dollars, as opposed to the scaled-back services proposal to reduce the number of beds to thirty-five beds, effectively reducing the number of beds at the shelter by thirty percent. That proposal came in at a, a slightly under two-point-one million dollars, and when, and just opposing the two numbers, we do see a variance of about hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars, uh, for the year, or approximately eleven thousand dollars per month savings for the reduction of fifty beds at the shelter. As you can see in the chart, staffing costs makes the majority of the contractual expense, uh, quite frankly, and you will also see in the next chart, the personnel required to operate the shelter for thirty-five beds or fifty beds is effectively the same, except for the proposal, for, the reduced proposal for thirty-five beds, uh, proposes the elimination of one navigator position, in other shelters, they are considered, or they are called the case managers, and we also see a proportional reduction in the food and the basic supplies as well. Uh, but in the overall scheme of, uh, two-point-two million dollar, or more than two-million-dollar contract, uh, a savings of eleven thousand dollars a month is rather insignificant. When we break down the proposal on a per-bed-per-day rate, the scaled-back proposal comes out to approximately hundred-sixty-three dollars and fifty-three cents. Compared to that, uh, the status quo proposal comes out to about hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents, effectively, how we come back to those numbers is we take the total contract amount, we divide by the number of beds, and divided by three-hundred-and-sixty-five, and that's how we come to those per-bed-per, uh, day rates. Uh, and an important thing to note, everything that's been stated so far is the, more of the quantitative measures of that, the six, seven months prior, or, uh, preceding the August twenty-fifth City Council meeting, one of, one of the things that, uh, Timothy and I had mentioned was that the average occupancy at the shelter was approximately thirty-one to thirty-three people at a given day. Since that City Council meeting, that number a- at the shelter has jumped to forty-two of this morning, uh, some would call that serendipity, or some would call that the vicissitudes of life. The, essentially, the qualitative measure that must be addressed today is, it, should the council elect to reduce the number of beds to thirty-five, what would come of the overflow above the thirty-five beds that would be allowed, effectively, as of today, that would be seven people. Quite frankly, those people probably will not be in the neighboring cities, we will probably see them in our, our bike trails, or Bellflower Boulevard, somewhere. This chart is also a visual that, that outlines the staffing plan for thirty-five beds or fifty beds, effectively, what we're looking at is, uh, the personal cost, including the indirect cost for the benefits, uh, for employees, it makes up the bulk of the contracts, and given that the personnel to run the shelter of thirty-five or fifty beds, um, cost, will cost just about the same, it, um, one provides better value than the other. And so with that, uh, we wanna leave it open-ended, but staff's recommendation this evening is to authorize the city manager to execute amendment number six to agreement file number eight-fifty-three in a form approved by the city attorney, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. And that concludes my presentation, and Timothy and I are here to answer any, any additional questions you may have.
I love questions.
Uh, I'm just gonna say a comment, I, I was hoping better, but I ge-, I get it, I understood, and I didn't know how much lower it could go, thirty-five to fifteen, because of the hard costs that you incur. But it makes sense, and, you know, so, thanks for trying, um, with that said.
Appreciate your understanding.
Yeah, that I understand, being a businessman, I said, I was, I was still hopeful, but, yeah, and then to hear, you know, our occupancy went up by seven, yeah. Anybody else have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you so much.
Please go.
Um, in your recommendation, uh, Mr. Lee, um, when you say amendment number six, will that be based on fifty, fifty beds, or thirty-five beds?
The recommendation?
Yeah, to execute amendment number six.
Number eight-thirty-five agreement, or?
Yeah, amendment number six to agreement, uh, file number eight-five-three. Is amendment number six, does it cover fifty beds or thirty-five beds?
So, that would be, that would be decided depending on the city council's.
So, it wasn't specific?
Okay.
Okay, alright, good, good.
So, we gotta add, add that to it.
Alright, good, um, question about the, um, can you go to the previous chart, oh, no, after this one, the next one, there you go, so where's security in this, um, list of sta-, uh, in the staffing plan, where's security?
On the previous page, on the previous one.
This page.
Security's not on, uh, uh, security's a.
It's not here?
Third-party members, so it's not our staff.
But how many, how many employees do you have for security?
Uh, we're running right now one guard at twenty-four hours.
Just one guard?
Twenty-four hours.
Okay, so how about the?
So, three shifts?
That's correct.
How about the, how about, there's no guard inside the facility?
So, the, the guard, uh, is on patrol, so they, they operate at the, the front door, they do access control, and then they also, they also walk the, the site.
Okay, because in the past, there was, used to be one male, one female inside, and one, one outside.
That's correct, yeah, so the.
Do you still have that, or?
We do not have that anymore.
So, you eliminated the, um, the guards inside the facility?
W- yeah, one of the guards inside the facility.
Say it again?
Yes, we went down from two guards down to one guard inside the facility.
Two to one, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, good, uh, in, in terms of, um, I, I see what you're saying here, in terms of the, the, the cost between fifty and thirty-five, um, how effective is the navigator? Because right now, you have two. Okay, so if you bring it down to one, uh, will that, um, will that be a, um, significant degradation in terms of the level of service?
That, that would be a degradation in the level of service, so right now, uh, so, in general, we try to target a case load between twenty and twenty-five per navigator, so at fifty, we're at twenty-five apiece, um, so if we go down to one navigator, uh, that would be, especially at one to fifty, that, that ratio would be well overwhelming for the navigator, and they wouldn't be able to meet with frequency, uh, with those individuals in the shelter, um, in order to ensure that they're held accountable.
So, they're gonna be, uh, meeting with the, with the participants more, uh, less often?
That's correct.
Okay, how often do they meet?
At least weekly.
Weekly, okay. Now, in terms of the supplies and the food costs, those are the variable costs here that, um, that can change from fifty to thirty-five, right? Wh- what is your meal pattern, is it weekly, bi-weekly, or monthly?
Uh, our meal, our meals are.
Yeah, meal pattern, because I know, I know, you set, you set your meals, I'm sure of that, right?
So, yeah, we do three meals a day, um, we try to, we do one hot meal a day and three cold meals, usually it's a hot dinner.
My question is, how do you, when do you, how often do you set up your meal patterns? Meaning that, uh, your menu for, is it menu for the week, menu for two weeks, menu?
Oh, the menu is provided on a monthly basis from our vendor.
Or monthly?
Yeah.
Okay, is, is it very difficult to, how difficult is it to, um, to adjust your, your meal patterns between twenty-five, between thirty-five to fifty, based on the, the census of the shelter?
Oh, we, we adjust the meal, the, the ordering on a weekly basis.
You order on a weekly basis?
The, the menu is provided on a monthly basis from, from the vendor, 'cause they're, they're purchasing, they're, they're planning what they're gonna cook, but they, they, you know, have a volume operation, so we're able to adjust the ordering on a, on a, on a pretty, pretty fast basis.
Oh, okay, okay, so you can adjust, you, so you adjust on a weekly basis, in terms of your volume of your orders, uh, for all the ingredients, all the, um, all the food? So, if there's any flexibility, it's gonna be the food.
That's one of the, so, yes.
Uh, okay. So, even if, let's say, uh, the contract, when we have it for fifty, you bill us for fifty, regardless of how many participants are there in, I call them participants.
Sure.
Uh, are there in the facility, right? You will, you bill us based on fifty, regardless.
We, we do bill on actual costs, and so we do, it's a reimbursement basis, so we submit our actual costs to, to the city and our reimbursement.
So, it's not fixed, um, based on the number of, not based on fifty?
That's correct. That's correct.
Uh, okay, so, so when there's less participants, let's say, if it goes down from fifty to thirty, or thirty-two, then the cost goes down too?
Yeah, there, there could be savings in.
Okay, so in both supplies and food?
Mayor Protem, if I knew, if I may just make a comment there, in term, are we talking about just the price for meals and supplies, or are we talking about the?
The overall cost, the overall cost.
I just wanna clarify the actual expenses, whether we, whether there's thirty-five or fifty, most of the cost is fixed at the personnel, so the personnel.
No, no, I'm just focusing on the food cost, because personnel is personnel.
Okay.
Yeah, when you have, let's say, when you have two navigators or three case managers, that's what, that's what you're gonna have.
Correct.
But the food cost, it's based on actual, and I'm glad to hear that.
So, theoretically, right, if our, if our census does drop to thirty-five for the whole year, you could, we could rec-, we could recognize the savings as indicated on that, on that spread.
Because if you remember, in the initial years of this contract, it was fixed cost for food, and that was one of my pet peeves, because you bill us based on the number of participants, times the, the, there's a, there's a cost per meal.
Right.
Initially, so you made adjustment to that based on, based on actual cost.
Well, we have, we, we, maybe I misspoke a, at, at that time, we, we have to budget for, um, for that cost, right, we have to budget to provide meals for everybody.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, and so the, my proposal will always include that, that number, but if there's, if the, there's less food being served, then we'll order less food from the vendor, um, and that saving should, uh, echo through into the invoice.
So, so my point here is, it, it doesn't, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't matter, in terms of the food cost and supplies, whether we, we contract with you thirty-five beds or fifty, you're gonna bill us based on actual anyway.
Correct.
So, regardless, it's just budget numbers, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, the only question here is, do we want one navigator or two navigators, I think, for tonight? That's the question. Okay, right, that's the bottom line.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, alright, very good, that's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
The food costs, the meal cost up there is a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars, and that's for the year, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's very reasonable.
Yes.
Because it's, it's, it breaks down to four-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars a week, for fifty people.
I believe it's about seven, seven dollars and something, plus delivery.
Eight, eight-fifty, or something like that.
Yeah, plus deliveries, yeah.
That's for, you know, I imagine, do they deliver once, or?
Yeah.
So, when they deliver once at the, the hot meal, like, or do, you warm it up?
We keep, they keep it hot, so they deliver the hot meal.
And then with that, then you have tomorrow's breakfast delivered, which is probably some, uh, pastries or something, yeah, some cereal or something like that, and, and lunch is kinda the same way, or there's less lunches?
Uh, lunches or something cool.
But, yeah, that's, it's, it's, it's nothing, the meals are nothing, that's like the best, that's the best bargain.
Yeah.
Because of volume, because they have the volume, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. Well, you were on that, I was like, something didn't add up right, but I guess it does, even, yeah. That was all?
Yeah, that's all, yeah.
I have no questions, but I'm ready to make a motion.
I have no questions.
Have any questions, yeah?
Well, I, well, Mayor, I, because I think ba-, based on what Timothy said about the impact of the navigator, I, I think it's worthwhile to keep the two navigators.
Oh, yes, and that too, that is nothing.
I mean, that's a no-brainer, so.
But it does help for you breaking it down to thirty-five beds.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
There's no fat, that's a cut-off, there's nothing there, there was, what, and it doesn't make sense to go from thirty, you know, fifty to thirty-five either, it doesn't.
Because I think if we do that, we're gonna be shortchanging their opportunity to find housing.
Yeah.
That's correct. Anyway.
Dan?
Alright.
Oh, he's not in here, I forgot.
No, Dan.
No, Dan.
He's just, he's.
Alright, so are you ready, Mayor?
Yeah.
Or you wanna hear the public, the mayor wanna comment?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking one thing here first, I gotta figure out where I'm at. Anybody in the audience wanna come up to the podium and talk about our homeless shelter? Not seeing any.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
Come on, Timothy.
My question to staff is, if we go, if the council chooses to go for the contract agreement, is this locked in stone, or is it something that can, that can be exited through the year, or we're good for the whole year?
Mayor Dutton, the, if we were to extend the agreement, the, Mr. Berger's agreement has a termination clause in there.
Okay, there is a termination clause in there, okay, so there's an exit. Yes, and cases, you know, there's things I know that. Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city.
My mind's right now.
Author, you're good. Authorize the city manager to execute amendment number six to agreement file number eight five three in a form approved by the city attorney with Mercy House Living Center to extend the term for temporary shelter operator services at New Hope Temporary Shelter with fifty beds.
Second motion.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Sanchez and a second by Mayor Protim Sunny Santa Inez. Call roll, please.
Mayor Protim Santinas.
Aye.
Councilmember Morse.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Mayor Dutton.
Aye. A big consent calendar, too. There's that. Welcome back, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, any of my colleagues have any recusals or any items that wanna be pulled for discussion?
I do, Mr. Mayor, I just gotta find out which ones they are. Um, I've got a property conflict on fourteen F.
Oh, you wrote it down, okay.
And a fourteen G.
That's fourteen F and fourteen G.
So I'm too close to the park and, uh, the, uh, red curb, I'm too close on water.
Anybody else wanna pull anything for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item fourteen G. Sorry, Dan.
I'll get out of the room, thank you.
No, just for a comment, just for a comment.
You, you just do it to be mean, that's why.
No! Would they do that to you?
No, never, never.
Never, never, never.
Mr. Attorney, I should leave the room, shouldn't I?
No, no, wait, Dan, there must be something else.
No, you're by yourself, Sonny.
Anything, pull anything? Nope, okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, goes.
No, 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 Dan's gonna be leaving.
He just wants me out of here.
Sunny's kicking him out again, Sunny's gonna make him stand in the corner.
Don't go too far, Dan.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, item fourteen G, uh, for the benefit of the public is the, um, to authorize the city manager to execute a purchase agreement to buy a property, um, the address is, um, ninety-five twenty-six Oak Street. Um, this property is, um, is mostly, well, there's small structure, uh, it's about, um, uh, how many square feet? Seven ten thousand square feet. But my point here is, I really want, thanks staff for bringing this up to the council, and I'm really glad that we're able to purchase this property. It's a property that backs into Sims Park. And, um, it's gonna be a wonderful addition, as you recall, um, many years ago, there was a survey of the parks in Bellflower and the neighboring cities, and, uh, Bellflower is defined as park deprived. That means that we have less park compared to, um, the per capita, uh, number of the population of Bellflower. So, so this is very timely, and, uh, it, the, the purchase price is very reasonable, so it's gonna be a wonderful addition to our city. And again, the best part here is, the owners came to us to offer the property, and we're able to, to buy this property, which will be a wonderful addition to Sims Park. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, let's get Dan back. He could hear everything, I think.
Wait, is your cue from twelve, fourteen C?
All right.
Thanks for coming back, Dan.
Thank you very much.
I missed you.
We miss, we miss him.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull fourteen C.
Let's see if there's more.
Yeah. No, I, I'm not part of that one.
Oh, you'll go with that.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor.
Okay, let's get yours.
Mayor, fourteen M. Uh, Mr. City Manager, you must sit there and.
You're gonna do fourteen M now, Sunny?
Yes, if I, if I may.
Let's stay with Sunny, Victor, while you're still looking, while you're still shopping over there. Go ahead.
Okay, so what are we doing in fourteen M? What's the risk, the bottom line is, what's the risk for the city?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll relieve the director from giving a presentation.
Okay.
I, I, I think my concerns are listed in the staff report and speak for themselves. Uh, I am frankly surprised when a vendor pushes back, we've even offered to take out the indemnification provision altogether, which would simply mean that in the event things went south, we would end up in court, and a court would make a determination of who owed what, who owed what to whom. These are real, uh, concerns, these are not made-up concerns. I have other jurisdictions, for example, where the ACLU has contacted those jurisdictions with automatic license plate reader concerns. Uh, there is a law in California, for example, that data cannot be shared to other states where there are, where abortion is, is been made illegal. Um, and I have those types of, of correspondence with threats of lawsuits. So I recognize that on the face of it, it seems like some of these things are of little concern. We frankly don't have control over this technology, this is a private piece of technology, but it is on public property, and as you know, anyone with eight hundred dollars can sue the city. Uh, the separate question is whether or not they win, which is why I always emphasize that there's a transfer of risk from the city to the vendor who has control over that. Ultimately, it's a policy call for the city council to move forward, and the reason it's on consent is I recognize that the city council has previously expressed itself with regard to the public policy and the, uh, benefit that these types of technologies will bring, uh, to the, to the community, and that's why you're elected. I simply raise these as, as concerns from a legal perspective and want you to move, jump into this with eyes wide open.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, for the benefit of the, the listening public, this item, uh, fourteen M relates to the acquisition of, um, sound thinking, the, the, um, the spot shooter that was discussed in a previous meeting. And, uh, I really appreciate our city attorney expressing his concerns in terms of the transfer of risk. Um, as, as we've been very involved with, um, the California Joint Power and Insurance Authority, I'm very cognizant about taking the risk. Um, so, um, my question, additional question here is, in terms of the laws that have been filed related to this kind of activities, uh, how far have they gone? Based on what you know?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, off the top of my head, I can't tell you, as you know, this, uh, governor's jurisdiction has been engaged in other types of lawsuits, uh, and the concentration has been elsewhere, mainly at a federal level, and also at, as we've discussed, probably ad nauseam at the dais with regard to housing. The concerns, though, with regard to the civil, uh, rights concerns surrounding these types of technologies are real, certainly for the state of California and, and for many, many members of the community. Um, and again, I reemphasize that the state of California has a law with regard to sharing some of this data with other states throughout, throughout the United States. In a law enforcement context, which this is not, but in a law enforcement context, certain jurisdictions that do have their own police departments, for example, have taken very significant steps toward making sure that data is not shared with other states. I don't know how this data is shared, because again, it's private technology. My concern, though, is real from the standpoint of, because I don't know, I can't control that risk, which is why the vendor should be taking on that risk, which is why the whole thing's on the agenda in the first place.
Right, right. And, and, um, and also, this similar contract's been executed by our neighboring cities, correct?
That, that is correct, yes.
Okay, how many cities have signed up with this? Um, at, at least our neighboring cities, how many cities have signed up?
Uh, just neighboring cities, using the shot, the ShotSpotter technology would be Pico Rivera, uh, Lakewood, and Hawaiian Gardens.
Hmm, and so far, you're not aware of any concerns they have? They, they signed the, they signed the agreement the way, the way it was written by their attorneys?
That is correct, I checked, would each one of those cities and language that's being proposed by the vendor is a language that they accepted, which being, which were being proposed, I guess, for this council to accept as well, potentially, and as far as I know, there's been no litigation aspects facing them at this point.
Okay. All right, very good, that's all I had. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Victor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm very grateful that, uh, that was caught by our city attorney. I would ask a question to Mr. McNerney, if you were to come back to the podium. No, I, I, I too lean with, uh, the city attorney on this, not knowing what, obviously, we can't foresee the future. Um, we've been very, um, he's been very, um, forward in always having this type of indemnification language and very, uh, astute to making sure that we're protected from that perspective, and I think that, to me, this is a big red flag. Um, again, we can't predict the future. So my question to you, Mr. McNerney, would be, are there other vendors out there that can provide the similar service that we could, if we were to table this for now, could we do some research and figure that out? Or is this a, I mean, a must? Obviously, I'm supportive of the technology, you know? And I see its potential benefits, but at what, you know, what risk? And what are?
True.
What are our options?
Um, I, I guess I can answer that two ways, because we're, we're talking about two different types of technologies here, one being the ShotSpotter and the other one being the Plate Ranger, which are the cameras' perspective. Uh, ShotSpotter, the sound thinking, the vendor that we're looking to go with, they are the founders of that technology. And so what was being proposed, be brought here, is the state-of-the-art technology, which is utilized by them. Um, other vendors have, um, like-minded technology, but I don't believe it's up to the par of what sound thinking is offering. Um, and one key component here is sound thinking backs their, their results through a court process, so they can have, uh, licensed investigators will come out and provide testimony to a court to verify their data. No other vendor offers that. So that legitimizes it even further. Um, with the Plate Ranger capacity, multiple vendors offer, uh, license plate reading technology. Uh, we use another vendor in town, we use Motorola, uh, for some of our cameras, which then we took that equipment, donated it over to the sheriff's department, so it's more in their purview. Um, but based on our use of their, um, Plate Ranger system, it is by far better than what else out there. Their rival competitor is Flock, which is another, uh, one that's fairly widespread out there. Um, the Plate Ranger system is, is way above and beyond what Flock has, has the ability to offer, uh, based on our, uh, review of all the different, uh, technologies. And the same goes even for the Motorola cameras, that we even have some of which, uh, right now.
All right, thank you, Mr. McNerney. I'm okay on, on fourteen M for now.
I'd like, I wanna make a comment and stuff, yeah. It just seems like every time we wanna do something in public safety's venue, we have a hurdle to jump, or we have risk assessed, or whatever, it's, whether it's from the, you know, the sheriff department, they can't supply, uh, supply extra deputies because of, uh, uh, too many openings in their department is, uh, there's a backlog of training deputies and hiring deputies. Uh, seems like every time we try to do something, we actually run into a roadblock, and here's just another example of one. Um, it comes with risk, as the city attorney said, but we, we have risks every day. I'm of the feeling that if you're not trying something, you're not trying to fix a problem. This is sold, as we, we had the gentleman that was here months ago that was explaining the system to us. Um, you know, the benefits, I think, outweigh the risk. Um, we don't know what the risk could be, but in the community of having a safe community and our public safety, which we know isn't what our community wants, um, we end up with tools that we can try to do something to make our community better. And yes, we have to weigh what was brought as risk in the end, as we, you know, have a developer that, you know, doesn't wanna take all the risk of a product, but again, like, you know, we've went with the animal control, thinking outside the box, we're, we're, you know, we have, we're spending millions of dollars a year with Southwest Patrol because we can't get deputies. And now we have electronics, uh, that can do a better job. Yes, there's risk, there's a risk in everything, there's a risk when you leave in here, leave here, if you even get home tonight, because of crime. But I, I, I really think, you know, we don't know what the risk exactly is, but I think it outweighs of the city propelling forward with our public safety. And I just wanted to put my spiel on the table of what I thought. So what is your, uh, if there's no other comments, what is our flavor here tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, the consent calendar.
Second motion.
Wait, uh, Mr. Mayor, I had one, uh, pulled item twelve C, or fourteen C.
Oh, but you had fourteen.
I guess.
Yeah.
What? You forgot about C.
Yeah, no, it's okay. But, uh, before we leave fourteen M, sorry.
Yeah.
I did have, uh, an additional question for our city attorney. Have all avenues been exhausted on this, Mr. Berger? On any other type or form of, of, um, common, or, what's the word I'm looking for here? Um, compromise, for lack of a better word?
I, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I put my ultimate compromise onto the table, knowing what the, what the city council would like to do, which is simply taking out the indemnification provision altogether. That was rejected. So I, I, I gotta be really frank, that raises red flags with me, when my ultimate compromise, which is to take it out altogether, is rejected. So I don't wanna be right, but I feel like I will be right sometime down the line, I recognize where the council's going, I, that's why you're elected, you're the policymakers, I'm not. But I need to, the reason that it's on the agenda this way is because I don't want, in the future, if things go south, gee, city attorney, why didn't you put something into the contract to get us out of this? Well, this is the reason why.
And Councilmember Sanchez, to piggyback off that, there were multiple meetings, multiple efforts by myself, city attorney's office, and their legal team, and contract negotiations to go through this whole process. Multiple items in the contract were at odds, and we met, uh, most of them halfway and made accommodations. This one before you was the only one that was left outstanding, and to Mr. Berger's point, he did offer to have the entire section removed, which they came back with and denied, uh, our ability to do that, and prefer to include their standard language for indemnification, which they include in all their standard, in all their contracts as the prevailing section, uh, within our agreement.
Okay. What is the clause on this for sharing of data?
So they, it's very limited, uh, so sound thinking, um, they, obviously, that they, you, you may not know, but they offer this service, uh, countrywide, uh, throughout, throughout the entire U.S. Um, there's very, uh, limited situations in which any of their data is shareable, uh, it is only shareable, uh, in two ways. One is a law enforcement agency to a law enforcement agency, and second would be through a subpoena through a court. That is the only time the information is shared.
That is stated in this agreement?
It's within the agreement, correct.
What section?
Uh, it'll be within the recourse section.
I guess I just wanna hear from the city attorney that that is on here. That's really my biggest concern, is the data sharing, because I think that, to your point, Mr. Berger, I think that's the one thing. I don't foresee the item falling from the, you know, pole and hitting someone on the head.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, I, I think I've expressed my concerns, uh, sufficiently. Um, I, I can't, you know, I'm not the vendor. I, I don't know what happens behind closed doors with regard to the vendor. I, I do know that in this modern society, people of data and data sharing is much more valuable these days than, I know I'm dating myself, than when, when had a Rolodex. So, uh,
What's that?
Exactly. That was for you, Mr. Sanchez. That was for you, Mr. Sanchez. But my point is, is that, yeah, I could have that in the clause, but I will never know until it came, were to come out, whether or not that clause was honored.
Right, honored. Right, honored.
I'll move on to fourteen C in the meantime, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure how I feel on fourteen M. But, uh, fourteen C, I just wanted to ask questions or just kind of get a quick, kind of a synopsis, you know, just a little short summary of what the work is for the audience's, uh, attention and purpose. Mr. Gurecki, if you can explain to us what fourteen C is?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, uh, fourteen C is a ward bid, uh, to do some refurbishments, uh, at the outdoor pool at Thompson Park. It's inclusive of fixing the, the perimeter concrete around the pool, uh, the replastering of the pool in totality. And then we're going to be doing some work in the filter rooms to upgrade the pool filter equipment, uh, for the outdoor pool.
Thank you, Mr. Gurecki. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's do this. Let's, uh, we'll pull, pull in, uh, fourteen M as a separate vote.
That's fair.
That's fair? Okay. Okay. Somebody want to make a, a motion on the consent calendar for, uh, everything but fourteen M?
He did.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
I'll second that motion. I'll second the mayor pro temp's motion.
Got a motion on the floor for everything on the consent calendar except fourteen Mary. And with a second by Sanchez and the motion was mayor pro temp. Without objection, that'll be the order. What was on, um, what part instead of me looking for it was modified on fourteen M for the, it says in the,
I'm sorry, it's page seven of the agreement. I'm sorry, page five of the agreement itself, page seven of the document. The indemnification and limitation of liability section, you can see there's a strikeout in red.
The strikeout, that's strikeout, okay.
There you go. And Brian's got it up on the screen there. Uh, as far as the councilmember Sanchez's question about data sharing and compliance with the law. Uh, section eighteen, you'll see is compliance with the law requires that the vendor comply with all applicable sections of federal, state and local laws. That would include data sharing, uh, as required by state law. That's, that's what we cover that section.
And specifically, again, to answer that question, State Senate Bill thirty-four from two thousand and fifteen, which prohibits the sharing of the, uh, license plate data specifically to, uh, just those, those examples that I gave you.
I think, I think without putting words in Carl's mouth, I think his concern is more about enforcement of that provision, not the provision itself.
Right.
Sure.
So this here's a copy of, of the contract that ShotSpotter sent. This is a, or this is stuff that we are turning in.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the redlining shows the last bastion of disagreement.
Okay, so everything is agreed except for this, except for eighteen, you don't know how it's going to be enforced until there's a problem.
Right. I mean, that, that's just a, it's a standard clause, comply with the law. We require everyone to do it. The issue has to do with the enforcement of it. I have no means of knowing whether or not that's actually heretofore until it comes out, say, in a court.
Okay, so the, yeah, basically it boils down, the, the provider's not going to hold the city harmless. That's basically, yeah, okay. Yeah, it's redlined, so, yeah. If M is approved, then it goes through without that. Harmless. I'm going to make a motion to approve fourteen M and see how this goes.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion on the floor?
Before we, before, yeah, I wanted to, one more question, I guess, was would there be any, I guess, Mr. McNerney, if you and Mr. Berger are working with, um, with them on this, are they not willing to even exempt us from any actions that they cause or any loss, anything? Any negligence, no negligence on their part at all? Like if, if their own staff, you know?
I believe if you, if, how I read these two sections is they're proposing that if they're found to be negligent in some way, they would cover that. But if we are found, the city, to be negligent in some way, that they would not cover that. Versus our indemnification language is suggesting that regardless of who is at fault, they would cover us entirely. That's kind of a high level view. I'm not sure if that's accurate, Carl.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so our standard templates
Sure.
transfer all risk to the vendor. Uh, the philosophy behind that is if we could do that particular service, we would. And since we aren't, the vendor should be taking on the risk for that. It's not an issue of fairness or gee, you know, we should share in the risk. No, 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 no. If you're there taking taxpayer dollars, they defend the city, period. The issue here is we don't have that type of protection. And so again, goes to, I, as a practical matter, I'm not able to, which is why we're sitting here today, I can't tell you what the risk is because I don't know enough about how they share data, what's happening, what the actual risk is. I do know there is risk. I can't tell you the level of risk. I can't sit here and say, uh, under no circumstances do this. My concern has to do with the insistence that their language be used, which limits their liability to the city, depending on the circumstances. And yet this vendor is the one that's completely in control of its own technology, how the information is shared, et cetera. I don't, you know, I, I think I've made my point. I don't know that I need to keep on going down.
No, I get it, Mr. Berger.
But if I just may just close it out with this observation, which is why my ultimate compromise, knowing where the city council wants to go on things, is to simply, fine, let's strike out all the indemnification language. Because there's no legal requirement in a contract that you have any language with regard to defense and indemnification. And under those circumstances, the parties end up in court and a judge and a jury decides who's liable for what. So to answer your question, yes, this language talks about, well, we'll cover you if we're negligent, but it also limits that. And rather than argue about it, although wrote a best intentions is, I didn't expect to have a full presentation on what, what my concerns are here tonight. But the, the ultimate issue is just to take out the language. And rather than parse down the language, which is up here and negotiated from the dais, I mean, they're not even here to, to talk about and provide their, their particular viewpoint on it. I think we've spent a tremendous amount of time coming to a compromise on all the other language issues within the contract. And I'm just leery about, about saying, hey, this language is great.
I would, I would leave it with this, to your original question of can we explore other options? The answer to your question also comes with language Carl includes in all of our agreements. As we go into this agreement, we can be exploring other alternatives. This is technology that changes over time. It has changed over the relatively short period of time that it's been available and it will change over the next term of this agreement. If it comes along that we see other vendors that are, are working in this arena and changing some of this language and willing to accept things, we have a sixty-day exit clause. We can simply change and change out the equipment and go with a new vendor if that's something we want to do. It's certainly something that your staff can continue to monitor. The question before you really is a policy question. And anything we do, we take on a certain level of risk. And the animal control, thinking outside the box solution that Brian presented earlier, there's a certain amount of risk associated with that. We take risk in what we do. The question here is this is certainly taking on a little bit more risk than we normally like to take on. However, this is new technology. It's a new service that we're providing. The question before you is does the policy decision to try something new and take on that public safety service outweigh the potential risk that we don't really know is even a risk? And at least anecdotally from other organizations that have taken on this risk has been a very low risk. But it is there and that's why the city attorney's raised it to you to answer that question.
Perfect. That's wonder, that's amazing, right? That's why we're here. So the, for me, I guess, because I definitely, for the comments made by the mayor, I definitely want to support this, uh, this program and what we're trying to do here. My question then, just so I can get to a point where I can support it, I, when I do a risk assessment and a decision in any type of scenario, it's what can I control, what can I, can't I control? My question then is simple. Is there enough, uh, protection here from what they, from them? Them being ShotSpotter and that agency who we have no control? Because I can, you know, we have control here of what we can do. And so if the risk is only what, you know, like, you know, something that we were to do on our end, then I'm okay with that because I, that's on us, right? Am I making sense there? Where, versus, I don't want to assume their risks. Whatever they may be doing in, in another city or in another jurisdiction or in general, as an agency, as an organ, as a business, I don't know them. So I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, be liable for their negligence whatsoever. And if it's reading the way Mr. McNerney is saying it, then I'm okay with that because I think we have adequate staff and, you know, hi, you know, I, I believe in our people here and I think we have a good organization. So I think I'm okay with that. But is that what I'm reading? Am I, Mr. Berger? Sorry to beat the dead horse. Yes or no?
He'll breathe then.
The answer is a little bit of both. The first section of sixteen A clearly identifies that the provider shall at its expense indemnify the city against things that it does there. It also calls out that, that, uh, any lawsuits against the city, unknown as they may be, they're not indemnifying us against those. So it's, it's specific in clarifying those two things. So the, the real answer to your question is yes and no.
Great. Oh, I hate lawyers.
We might even have it. And it might be the attorney for this ShotSpotter is, is, are sparring with our attorney. It's basically what's going on. And this is not the first time that we've had this conversation over a contract.
It's tough.
No, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to, to, uh, to your overall point, I, I don't really care what other jurisdictions do. This is my client. I advise you and that's the way things go.
As it should be.
As it should be, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, question of Mr. Berger. So are you suggesting that we, you need time to change this document to take out some of the things that you find that if we leave them in there, it could be a problem? You just eliminate them, you said? Or is that not the case?
No, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we've gotten to a point where that's, that's done. We've, we've spent a tremendous amount of time on this.
All right, so the document as we see it, you don't need to do any other.
At this point.
Okay, well, I want, because then we'd table this thing, wait in a couple of weeks if you had to work it over anymore.
Unless you want to give me direction to do that and tell them, no, 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 we really mean it, which I don't think we're going to do. My answer to your question is this is a take it or leave it proposition. I think we've, we've negotiated in good faith and we've come to much compromise throughout everything else. This is the last bastion.
Well, you know, what I'm weighing in my mind is how you tell us, anybody with seven hundred and fifty dollars can sue us.
Right.
That's, that's a given. But at the same time, one of the things that you included when we did our cannabis regulations was the one about anybody getting sued, the other suppliers had to pay for the lawsuit. That was pretty good, you know? So that's where I know you'll give us good advice on both sides, you know?
But we were dealing with drug dealers then.
Yeah, now we're dealing with people that shoot guns. Is that better?
Okay, we're, if we're, if we're good, we got a motion on it. A motion is second on the floor. Call roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Santinas?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
That is a reluctant aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye. But at least we got dialogue. We had some very good dialogue.
Longest consent calendar we've ever had.
In this together with a team.
All right.
Yeah, you could vote last. You could hear it all.
Yeah, let's get my place here.
Remember that.
All right, council reports, uh, Santa Inez?
Um, no report, Mayor. Thank you.
Good report.
Good report. We were looking for that.
Councilmember Morris?
Uh, no report.
Councilmember Sanchez?
No report.
Wow.
Councilmember Coops?
I have something.
I know you do.
Last meeting.
We've had some very patient people out there too.
Well, it's, this is important. Last meeting, I adjourned our September eighth city council meeting in memory of Phyllis Larson. At that time, family had not made the announcement, I stood the arrangements that were for the funeral service. And that I wanted to announce tonight is the location would be Bethel Grace Church. That's at one seven nine zero nine Carpentero Avenue here in Bellflower. And the date is October eighteen, that's a Saturday, and it's at eleven o'clock in the morning. So if you knew Phyllis and the family, which was well-known in the city, uh, that would be where the service will be. The family had grave site services here about a week ago. So this will be a, uh, a memorial service in her honor, although she's already been buried with her late husband, Jerry. Uh, there'll be a luncheon followed after the funeral. That's why you have them at eleven, so you can eat at twelve. That's how that works. So more importantly, or equally is, is also want to, uh, adjourn this meeting in honor of Georgia Heron. Georgia Heron died September twelfth at the age of ninety-four years old. She died in her home where she, her husband bought in nineteen fifty-six, where they raised their four children. And two of them are here with us this evening. She was a remarkable mother. She gave of her time freely to those in the neighborhood. She was a great grandmother, great grand, uh, mom, great wife. Uh, just knew how to do all the things that TV moms seem to be able to do. I mean, great cook, uh, seamstress, quilter, amazing gardener, grew all kinds of things, flowers and plants and trees, and they all did well. Just a real asset to our community and to her family. She leaves behind Cindy, who is a classmate of mine from Belfour Hive in nineteen sixty-nine, and son Scott and son Curtis, who lives in Japan. Scott lives in Oregon and of course Dinah, who lives in, uh, nearby. Now, where does she live? Arizona, okay. So again, this is a family who's been here a long time. I adjourned the meeting for Roy, her husband, last July. He had a business on Alonda for many, many years. But it was almost as though a perfect American success story. The kids always went to Bellflower Schools, all did well in life. Their mom and their dad were always there for them. Uh, they lived over there on Belfair Avenue all those years. And so it's a completion of a great family unit of mom and dad no longer being here. But I just wanted to recognize how truly great that family was, and we have many of those in Bellflower. But this, to be, live ninety-four and ninety-five years, i- i- is really an amazing blessing. And I wanted to recognize that tonight and will adjourn in their honor and her honor. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, I'll call for adjournment in memory of Georgia Heron to the regular, to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five thirty P.M. on Monday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We are adjourned.